Good evening. At this time, I'll reconvene the board in the open session for the
Meeting of Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, November 11th, 2021, at 7:03 PM. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at aisd.net. Thank you for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Kavassos in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the midst of all liberty and justice for all.
Good job, students, especially the ones I heard start to say "honor of the Texas flag." Thank you for that. At this time, would you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions around you? And now, if you would, in just a second, please join me in a moment of silence. And during this moment of silence, please think about and acknowledge on this special day of Veterans Day to thank all of our servicemen and women who have made the ultimate call and committed to the ultimate service in serving our country. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda, if you can't tell, it's these young men and women standing in front of us. This is a program or presentation. The first thing we have this evening is a student performance by the Duff Elementary, where I am a graduate of, and my mother still lives down the street, and Hill Elementary, who I have a lot of friends that went to Bailey with me from Hill, and combined choirs. Ms. Foster, please go right ahead.
Thank you. I couldn't fit down there with all of the student performances tonight, but we are honored to have Hill and Duff choirs with us tonight for Veterans Day. Hill Elementary Choir is under the direction of Mrs. Sharon Bovey, who has taught at Hill for 20 years. Yes, I deserve a round of applause. And then Joshua Lewis, who is also directing from Duff Elementary. He's in his second year at Arlington Elementary. The Hill Elementary Choir features 4th, 5th, and 6th grade singers who perform for several winter events for the Arlington High Cluster. And in the spring, they love to perform at Six Flags and the Levitt Pavilion here in downtown Arlington. They've also sung for the Pride of Texas Music Festival for many years, always receiving a number one rating, of course. They're honored, along with Duff Elementary, to be asked to sing tonight for all of you and for the board meeting. The Duff Mustang Choir consists of 104 singers, made up of 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. We did not bring them all tonight. We would have to be at AT&amp;T Stadium. But we've got a portion of our 4th grade singers with us tonight. They also have performed at the Arlington High Cluster Concert, and they tour their holiday concert to retirement communities and to Barnes &amp; Noble. Representing the Mustangs tonight is, as I said, a portion of their 4th graders, and they're very excited to join their voices with Hill Elementary and sing "Americans We!" by Charisa Jennings. This song speaks to the importance of community and valuing families, neighbors, and cities because we're all Americans living in freedom and democracy. Take it away, 4th graders, 5th graders, 4th graders, all 4th, from Hill and Duff Elementary.
Family, neighbor, citizen, Americans We! Brothers, sisters, children, friends, Americans We! Cities, towns, communities are ours for you and me. For living as Americans, we have them all with you. Americans We!, sharing our precious freedom. Together we make our land our home, Americans We! Americans We!, standing up on great nations. United in liberty, Americans, Americans We! Patriots and countrymen, Americans We! Heroes, helpers, guardians, Americans We! Neighborhoods are ours, we must wear freedom ties our way. We're proud to be Americans across the USA. Americans We!, sharing our precious freedom. Together we make our land our home, Americans We! Americans We!, standing up on great nations. United in liberty, Americans, Americans We! We are Americans, Americans We!, Americans We!
To the students of Duff and Hill, thank you very much. Congratulations. That sounded awesome. Mr. Lewis, you made me want to start singing with your facial expressions and guidance. Thank you. And also to the students, congratulations on being able to perform with that many parents filming you at one time. It's been a long time we haven't filmed that much. So, congratulations. Thank you, guys. Thanks for all you do for coming out tonight. Thank you. And thanks for the conversation before. What? Thank you. Thank you, guys. Good job. Good job. Good job. And to our Student of the Month and Community Engaged, they were all here for you, but they're leaving. So, we'll give them just a second. Everyone clear out. And as Mr. Lewis left, I didn't realize, Mr. Lewis, the choir instructor, is also the son of David Lewis, who runs our entire Nutrition Services Department for the district, which has been a tough department, and he's done an outstanding job over the last year. Just another example of multiple generations working in AISD. We are going to go ahead and get... Well, I'll give him a second. While we're waiting, you're having to deal with me tonight. Ms. Mays is out tonight. She's had a minor medical procedure today, so unfortunately, you're stuck with me. So, if I mess up on the screen or something, I'm out of habit. So, but we'll make it work. Others are finding seats. We'll get moving. Next, we'll move to our Student of the Month. Looks like I am calling Mr. Crager. Come on up, sir.
Dr. Kavassos, members of the board, thank you all for this opportunity today. Today, we recognize sophomore Sergio Flores as our Student of the Month at our Early College Campus. Sergio is a young man who is always hardworking and always curious to learn more. Sergio was always looking to help his classmates with a little dose of positivity and a little motivation to push their efforts just a little bit further. While Sergio takes his work at ACHS very seriously, he also allows for his humor and his playful nature to shine for all of us to enjoy. Two hallmark beliefs at Arlington Collegiate High School are despite the adversity and the challenges students will face, if you give 100% effort and maintain a positive attitude, the success you seek will be realized. Sergio exemplifies these beliefs every day. We are fortunate to have him as an ACHS student. I feel very fortunate to be his principal, and I, along with the faculty and staff, are looking forward to seeing all the great things he will accomplish in the future. Please join me congratulating Arlington Collegiate High School's Student of the Month, Mr. Sergio Flores.
See, I already made a mistake and forgot to turn my mic on. I'm used to other people turning my mic on. Mr. Flores, when you win an award, we always ask for words of advice from our students. So, please, at this time, introduce anyone who's here with you. Feel free to thank anyone that's here, and the board always loves advice, especially from our Students of the Month.
Okay, well, I'm Sergio Flores. Good afternoon, board. I am here with my mom, my dad, and my little sister. So, I guess I'll start with advice.
I asked for it, and it's probably gonna be good, so I'm ready.
Okay, so, especially at Arlington Collegiate, where there's a lot more work, you have to be a lot more study. You have to be a lot more focused. Time management is probably one of the best advices I can give, especially with one of our projects that we just turned in today. A lot of people did not manage their time well. However, the people who did obviously did really well. So, just trying to get everything done a little bit before time goes along the way. Good support system. I want to say thank you to all my friends at Arlington Collegiate. They have really helped me this past year, especially during the pandemic, when we were all virtual. Even though we were on screens, they still managed to help me out a lot. So, they're an amazing support system, obviously. Also, thank you to the teachers that have taught me so far. The passion that they put into everything that they teach really helps the learning environment excel even more than what it would be without it. That's it.
That's pretty good, Sergio. Let me just take one second and brag on your leader and your school. And just so you know, Early College High Schools, we're now in year five of the school. Is that right? Six?
No, we're eight.
Eight. Wow. Time flies, and we're having fun. Just so y'all know, most schools are getting 40%, 50% of students that are graduating with two-year associate's degrees. Our Collegiate High School is graduating, I think, 90%? Around 90% are graduating. Coming out of school, high school, we've had to expand our program with UTA so that they can take more classes and get advanced and get closer to that bachelor's degree. They're coming out, and it takes, as Sergio said, a lot of time management, a lot of self-determination, and a really strong support system. So, Sergio, congratulations on making this choice to further your education and understand that you have to work really hard. And it sounds like, from what Mr. Crager said, you are exemplifying work hard. And I've seen your students over there, and the way you guys motivate each other and help each other and use the teachers as support, it's inspiring. And if you've never visited that high school, Early College High Schools, it is one of the best, and the stories are some of the best on there. And I know I could sit up here and drill down and get an amazing story out of you, Sergio. And I see your support system sitting right behind you. And when they introduce you, I always look at the parents because I want to see the smiles on their faces, and they were there. Congratulations on a job well done. You've still got more work to do. You're not done. Keep going. And Mr. Crager, thank you for leading such an outstanding campus and inspiring so many young men and women to really excel to the peak of their expectations. At this time, if you would mind, Dr. Kavassos and I'd like to come down and give you a token of our appreciation.
We'll turn that way. Sergio, so congratulations on this honor. You represent our students exceptionally well, and I am just so proud of you, and I know you're gonna have a great future. So, keep up the great work. This is for you, so you can remember tonight. And Mr. Hogg has some presentation, too.
Thank you, Sergio. On behalf of the board, these are officially a board lapel pin. You can wear this every single day. You can put it on your ID. You can put it up in your room, chasure it for the rest of your life. But just a moment to recognize and know that this is something for outstanding recognition for hard work and all the dedication you've done. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, man.
Thank you.
Next, we will move to our... Congratulations, Sergio. Next, we'll move to our Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation. Ah, Mr. Prowliss, there you are. He's waving at me. I didn't see where you were, sir. Mr. Prowliss, go right ahead.
I was gonna say Spence didn't have to raise the podium for me. Didn't know where it was. Vice President Hogg, Dr. Kavassos, members of the board, it's always a joy to be able to say thank you and recognize our wonderful community partners that we have in Arlington. And you might recognize some very familiar stalwarts of the community that are seated right here, and it's a joy to be able to tell you about an organization that they lead. And so, with the vision to transform the lives of 10,000 youth and their families by 2030, the Travel and Sports Legacy Foundation strives to close the opportunity gap that exists in underserved communities by providing students with access to career pathways to sustainable wage tourism jobs while addressing the workforce needs of the travel, tourism, and sports industries. In doing so, TSLF partners with Arlington ISD and the Rotary Club of Arlington to offer 40 Futures Initiative Program to AISD students at the Dan Diopert CTC Hospitality Service Program. Launched in October 2020, the 40 Futures Initiative is a model program that aims to transform the lives of underserved youth from public high schools. The program provides students with soft skills training to supplement the students' classroom curriculum. The program has three core components: communications development, confidence-building techniques, and student development and understanding the basics of personal finance. TSLF leverages the Department of Labor's Core Competency Model to measure the students' proficiencies and 13 competencies required for job applicants applying for entry-level tourism jobs. The program is taught virtually by Personal Development and Certified Coaches, who are former public school administrators and teachers. The coaches have a unique way of connecting with the students and working with them to bring out the innate potential the students possess. As part of programming, the students participate in internships at Crown Plaza, Sheridan, and Hilton Hotels. They receive rich instruction via American Hotel and Lodging Educational Institute's curriculum and Knowledge Matters Simulation Training. Additionally, students participate in tours of local colleges, instruction on how to write an essay for college admissions, and are connected with scholarship opportunities. Students have shared that the program and providers have helped them to understand their unique gifts and value. They have an enhanced appreciation of the value of others and have more clarity when making decisions about life after high school. We appreciate the efforts of the Travel and Sports Legacy Foundation to connect our students with opportunities to prepare them to be ready for college, career, and citizenship. It's an honor to introduce to you the leader of the organization, Mary German, who's the Executive Director, who I'd like to invite to the podium at this time.
Good evening, Dr. Kavassos and members of the board. Thank you for this special recognition and for your support of the Travel and Sports Legacy Foundation. We founded this organization in 2017 with the idea that we'd be able to make an impact on students, specifically students in Arlington Independent School District that are underrepresented and that are interested in jobs and travel and tourism. And since that time, we've been able to create many programs, even over last year in the height of COVID. Many of our programs were offered virtually to our students, and one that we're most proud of is the 40 Futures Initiative, and it is our Life Skills Soft Skills Training Program that helps students with not only core competency, understanding those competencies that are needed for travel and tourism careers, but also building their confidence. And we do that through our Clifton Strands assessments and the Core Clarity Framework, but also communications, because we often hear from a lot of our employers that students, in some cases, need help with their verbal communication skills. And so, this year, we've brought in the Youth Leadership Training Program for Toastmasters International, which has really created a more robust program for us. And then, of course, financial literacy. We want students graduating with knowing what to do when they arrive at college, when they will perhaps see more money than they've seen in many, many years, and to know how to use those funds and to invest and spend wisely. And so, our programs, we're very proud of all of them, but perhaps the 40 Futures Program is the most transformative. And it is because of the support that we have from your school board, in addition to many on your faculty and staff, Ms. Susan Patterson, the CTE Director, who was one of the very early supporters of our work, and our Rotary Club of Arlington, Ms. Peter Scott, who's in our audience today and also a member of the Travel and Sports Legacy Foundation's Board of Directors. It came to them this idea two years ago, and they very quickly said, yes, our students need this, and we're here to support it. So, thank you to all of you who have supported us, and for the Rotary Club of Arlington, as well as the CTE Department. And I want to thank our board, because without them, we would not be able to do all the work that we do. Our president is with us today, Mr. Mike Snaddle, Peter Scott, our past president, Cindy Will, who all of you know, I think, who is an instructor at the Dan Diopert Center, also on our board and one of our founding board members, Deschonda Scott, who's with Texas Live, as well as with Workforce Solutions for Tarrant County, Jolynn Wensanga with Accra Management. Many of you know Jolynn. She's worked on a number of school board projects. And Judy Roupe. I think all of you know Judy, who is a publisher of the Arlington Today Magazine and former city council member. I've been around long enough to remember when Judy was on city council. So, thanks to all of you, and not only our board, but all of you for the support of the work that we're doing. We're proud of our partnership that we have with Arlington Independent School District, and we look forward to serving you all with our programs and serving your students for many years to come. Together, we will continue to transform lives through tourism opportunities. Thank you.
Mary, don't say yet. I want to sing some praises to y'all. And as I look at that group, what an impactful group of folks that are looking to change kids' lives. And sometimes I find when you work with those kids, they change your life also. We talk about this town and tourism and travel and sports and those things, and this is one of those things we talked about of how do we find a way to really get kids to realize you can be born and raised and work and live your entire life in this town and have a wonderful, outstanding life. And what a great way for the... Students ask for rigorous and relevant learning. It's a constant request. You provide both. It's not easy. You make the students work hard, but they're finding that relevant information that makes them realize working really hard goes a long ways. And if they can find something... I always say, as important as these programs are, maybe they realize that's not the industry they want to be in for the rest of their life. And that's okay. What a great time to find out when you're 16 or 17 or 18 years old. You know, you find out. But there's also a lot to find out, I love this industry, and I'll work in it for the rest of my life and have a really good, strong career. So, let me just say thank you on behalf of this board, superintendent, and the entire district for all the dedication and commitment that your team has made for hard work and honestly, behind-the-scenes work. You guys do not look for recognition at all. Sometimes we have to force you to be recognized, and that's okay. That's what we're here to do. But just thank you for all the impact you're making on students in our community, in our town, but also impacting the entire community as a whole. Thank you for all your work. We're gonna come down and give a little token of our appreciation and also a couple of pictures. They've heard me talking off, but I guess... Let me present a plaque that says, "Community Engaged for Excellence Award Appreciation, presented to the Travel and Sports Legacy Foundation for your volunteer service there, Arlington ISD, November 11th, 2021." Thank you, guys, so much. And Spence, he's pretty good at his job, so... I'm out of practice, Dr. Kavassos. I'm not used to having to get that many pictures taken. So, next, we'll move on to our Financial Futures Committee presentation. I think it's Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, Dr. Kavassos, Board of Trustees. Tonight, we're going to bring to you the Financial Futures Committee presentation. They have been an important part of Arlington ISD for many years. They are vital to my role as CFO. They're vital to the Board of Trustees and Arlington ISD administration and community members as well. The committee consists of 18 members, one representative from each of the six high school networks, one employee representative from each of the three teacher associations, ATPE, TSTA, and UEA, one AISD campus principal, five at-large members who reside in the district, and three at-large AISD employee members. The current committee was selected by the board on October 12th of 2020, and they started their work in November of 2020. They started virtually, and now we are in-person meeting. But they've done a lot of work over the last year, and they're here tonight to present their findings and their recommendations to the board. We have Ms. Anne Mason, who's going to present for the committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Darla, for everything you've done to support us this year. Y'all did a great job, by the way. She's an awesome hire. She's wonderful. We... You've been such a joy to work with this year, so thank you so much for all you've done to support me, too, in feeling like I can make this happen. So, Dr. Kavassos, Vice President Hogg, Ms. Mays kind of messed me up because, you know, I practiced, and... I'm just kidding. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm so excited. This is, I think... This is, I think, my 10th year of doing Future Financial Futures Committee. So I've been doing it a long time, but this is my first time to speak, so I'm very excited. Thank you for allowing me to serve in this role this year. It's been a joy. I know when I started, I had no idea that I was going to love this so much, so it's just been great and I'm so excited. I do want to really quickly just say a couple of things before I go through the program. The first one is that I appreciate you doing the Future Financial Futures Committee. I think that it's vitally important, but I think it just says so much about how you value the support and how you value the community and their input. And even before, it was a hot-button topic everywhere else. You've always placed value on that, and I appreciate that as a community member and as a former parent, and your willingness to be transparent with us. So I just think it's important that we point that out and we say it. Thank you. And personally, on a note, I just want to say thank you for your service. I didn't know any of you before I started doing this, and I've gotten the opportunity to get to know you and work with some of you, a lot more than others even, on this committee, actually, at times. And I can say personally, I definitely feel like you are genuinely serving our students very well. And I know that regardless of whether I agree with every decision or every opinion, I know I can trust your heart and that your heart is for the students, so I just want you to know that. I know that not everybody gets a chance to interact with you guys on an individual basis. And so I just think it's important for them to hear that and for you to know that we appreciate what you do. So, thank you. So we will get started, and I will do my best to move quickly. I think Darla told me I could have 45 minutes. Yeah, I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
Ms. Mason, I'm running this. I'll keep you moving along. Don't worry.
And I have a clicker. Look at that. So obviously, this is our focus, is to provide the findings and recommendations from the community stakeholders to the Board of Trustees relating to budgets and long-range financial planning to support the district's strategic plan. I won't read the whole thing tonight, but I was not going to remember all that. So obviously, it's a big picture thing, and so we tried to remember that in all of our discussions and everything that we did in terms of trying to come to some good recommendations for you to keep at high level. So that's what we're doing. These are our committee members for this year, and I know several of them are here. If you're here, will you stand up real quick? Just like Ms. Moss said, this has been an interesting year in all my years of doing this. This group has been great because they've been willing to really forge through, you know, some hard times of trying to figure things out. It's a lot of information to process, and as you'll see on this next slide, these are the things that we've learned about and talked about. That's not for any slackers. It's big stuff. It's complex stuff, and to be engaged and to really understand it is challenging sometimes, but especially when you're sitting on a Zoom call. So I think each and every one of y'all, you were so amazing, and I really appreciate you sticking with it and forging forward with me on this process. So thank you so much for your hard work. And thank you to all of our staff members who came out and participated in teaching us all of this stuff. They were really great. We had Dr. Wertz, and Dr. Kael was out, and of course, Darla and her whole team, just making sure that we understood everything that was going on and had all the information that we needed in order to hopefully bring some good, informed recommendations for you. So I'll start really quick by just reviewing what was done in 2019. That was the last time that our committee brought recommendations to the board, for obvious reasons, there wasn't one last year. And then that year, the recommendations that we brought forward were to continue emphasizing additional efficiencies, to prioritize pre-K, and to assess the need for a new TRE, or for a TRE. I believe, actually, all of these have pretty much been addressed in one form or fashion, probably not at all how you thought was going to happen back in 2019, but you did obviously get to look at additional efficiencies during COVID. Pre-K happened not how we thought we were presenting. We spent a lot of time, and then turns out the state decided they were going to help us along with that, so it was great. And then you guys did decide we needed a TRE, and the community was able to approve that, so that's very exciting. So this year, so as usual, we get ready, we get in there, we start learning all that stuff, and it's like, whoo, so much information. And you're thinking, how in the world are we ever going to take all this and make it into something good? But yet, we sit down and we start talking, and as usual, it happens. And this is what happened this year, especially because we split into two groups once we started talking, and we came back and kind of shared with each other what the two groups had shared, and it was pretty obvious we essentially had had the same discussions. So that was very reaffirming, that these were the things we needed to talk about. So I'm just going to walk you through our conversations as quickly as I can to give you a foundation for the recommendations that we're going to make at the end. The very biggest thing and the most important thing that we talked about was the emotional health of our students and our teachers. We'll get into that in a second, but we had talked, thank you. I didn't expect applause. The biggest thing we talked about was the emotional needs of our students. I know that there's such a push right now for getting everybody caught up academically after being out with COVID, and it's just not the same, and everybody's behind all over the country, and there's this huge push. But what we began to discuss, and I think what you guys have probably already learned, is that they're never going to get those needs met if you can't meet their emotional needs. And it's huge, and it's important. And it's, you know, there are children who had pre-existing conditions before, and now they're having, this was compounded the issue, but I think what was most astounding to us was the fact that it's really not just those kids who are already at risk or who already had issues. I told this story at our meeting, and I'll tell it really quickly. I have a friend whose daughter is a student athlete at Martin High School, and she's an excellent student. She makes really good grades, never had an issue, she's always been a model student. She's, like I said, she's an athlete, so during COVID, she stayed completely engaged. She never, you know, lost touch with her friends or her team, and, you know, teams were still practicing and doing things like that. And so she stayed completely engaged, and she missed school, like she really wanted to come to school. And so she was excited when they went back to school this year. And then, lo and behold, two weeks in, she literally almost had a nervous breakdown and didn't want to go to school one day, and really didn't understand why. She didn't know what she was thinking or feeling. She couldn't figure out why she was feeling that way. Her mom was confused. She went and talked to her counselor at school. But the bottom line is, she was experiencing some things. She had struggles getting back into the system, you know, getting back into the groove and readjusting and getting re-engaged completely, even though she really wanted to do it. And so if it was hard for a kid like that, then we know it's hard for all of our kids, you know, at every level. And so it's crucial. And to hear some of the teachers on our group talk about the needs of their children, the things that their kids were experiencing, it's just across the board. And so I think it's by far the most pressing issue that we have, and it has a direct effect on the emotional health and well-being of our teachers as well. So that was the biggest thing that we discussed. Of course, we threw out a lot of ways that we thought we might could help you figure out how to fix the problem, but some of the things we talked about, really all centered around meeting the needs of the students in ways that we should not expect our teachers to have to do. So things like social workers who can help coordinate services for kids, whether it be physical needs that they need met, or emotional needs, or counseling, you know, those kind of things. Additional behavior interventionists who are trained. All of these people are trained in things that we really shouldn't be trying to get our teachers to have to do, in our opinions. Additional counselors at each campus. I know our committee had recommended that several years ago, and that was actually something that we did, increased counselors, and that was so great. But it feels like the need is there again, like either increasing the counselors or doing something to remove duties from them so that they don't have to, that they can actually do some counseling. You know, a lot of them, I think what the kids see is just somebody who tells them what their class schedule is. And we want that to be a place where they can go and actually get counseling if they need it, you know? So those kind of things, and also providing security for them to feel safe. So there are a lot of ways that we felt like we could address this, but pretty much all of them were things that we feel like are outside of a teacher's role. So. And then we talked, secondly, a lot about staff recruitment and retention. Obviously, you all know that that is an issue. I work at ESC Region 11, I hear it across the board, so it's everybody's problem, it's not just yours. But it's a big deal. I do want to start out by saying one thing real quickly, and I said this to committee, and those that have been around knew it, but a lot of us were new. You guys have made such amazing strides in the last 10 years in this area. When Dr. Kael came to talk, I remember the first time he came to talk to that group, he had just been hired, and I think we all sat there with our eyes like, are you serious? You're going to do what? And they had, he had all these great ideas about the way they were going to do things, and yet, here we are, and all those things have come to fruition, and you're in a really competitive market, they're doing surveys, you're doing all the things that you should be doing, you're in a great place. I have a sister who's a teacher in another district, and she came to me the other day, and when the surveys came out and said, wow, Arlington looks really great. And I'm like, yeah, duh, I've been telling you. So I think.
Please send her an application, Ms. Mason.
Trust me. You know, you've done great strides, and that needs to be acknowledged. And this is really just an encouragement that that needs to keep going. It's an ongoing journey, it's not a destination, so it needs to stay at the forefront. It's crucial to keeping our teachers, it's crucial that they have, you know, top-tier pay, it's crucial that all our staff have good benefits. And those things are really, really important, and we want to make sure that that stays as a high priority. In addition to that, I think what we probably spent more time this year in particular talking about was really staff morale and the emotional health of our teachers in particular, but all of our staff. They have been asked to do so much with so many more challenges, and yet really not any more resources. And not at really anybody's fault, I'm not saying anybody's at fault, it's just another symptom of the situation that we're in. But I think we know it's there, so we need to be very strategic and quickly address the fact that it needs to be addressed, because we want them to stay around. We've got really great teachers, we've got really great people, and we want them to stay around, and we want them to feel empowered to do their jobs and to do them well, because they're all good at their jobs. And I will just say really quickly that in our group, if you have time, talk to Dr. Varnell, he has really great ideas. He didn't know I was going to say that. But he did, he had really great ideas, and he had a really good sense of, a really good pulse of how his people were doing, what they were going through, and how they were handling it. And I just, I was very impressed listening to him talk about things that they needed, like giving, restructuring the workday to give teachers more time back. It's not something I would have ever thought of as a non-teacher person, but it makes a lot of sense. And as I talk to teacher friends, they're like, 100%. And the other thing I would encourage you to do is maybe, you know, I'm sure that we would want to, you know, have a committee to find out what teachers want, and all the same people who always raise their hand would be like, yeah, I'll be on that committee, but maybe, maybe not a committee. Maybe you just individually, staff, board members, whoever go, and sit down and have some conversations with people like Tonja Lewis, who is 23 years in the classroom at Martin High School, or Jake Kaler, who's 22 years in the classroom at Young Junior High, my friend Kristen Lewis, who's 14 years in the classroom at Wood Elementary. And these are just all people I know, there's hundreds of them out there. But there are people who have for years and years and years committed to stay in the classroom, and they love, because they love our kids, and they love this district, or they wouldn't be 23 years in the same school district, in the same school, teaching, still teaching kids, you know? And they know exactly what they need to do their jobs. And they, those are the kind of people that I think probably can best tell us what they need to feel appreciated and to feel like they know what, that they have what they need to do their jobs. And they also know what the kids need, to be honest. They're the ones who sit, you know, if you want to go to lunch at Martin High School and you don't have anywhere to go, Ms. Lewis's room is where you go. So if you want to know what the kids are doing, go at lunchtime to Ms. Lewis's room, and then you'll get a good handle on how the kids are feeling. So anyway, there's lots of ideas about how to, how to address these issues, but they're going to be the ones that can give you the best information about how to do that. We did talk a lot about recruitment, and I'll just say that really quickly. I, we had a couple of people who gave some, a couple of teachers who said, I thought this was very wise of them, said they felt like recruitment really started in the classroom in high school, because if you have a good high school experience, then you're going to want to come back and be a teacher there, because it may wake you, want to be a teacher, because you've had a great experience. If you don't have a very good experience in high school, you're not going to want to be a teacher. So it actually even just starts there, but it also starts with things like the Ready Set Teach Program. I have a daughter who's a sophomore in college now, but she went through Martin, and she was in the Ready Set Teach Program. She's going to be a teacher, she's going for education, she's super excited, and she wants to come back here and do it, because she did have such a great experience. She was at several of the elementaries through that program. She wants to coach softball, so she wants to come back here and do that, because she had a great experience with her softball team. And so it's just a, it's a great way to get it started. And you know, at Ready Set Teach, I know.
That's another application, Ms.
She's just a sophomore. But she, you know, there were a lot of kids in her class who didn't make it. Like, it was a big deal the day when they handed out the little bags, and they make such a big deal out of it, because a lot of kids didn't get to do it, they just don't have the capacity to do as many as wanted to. So maybe there's a place there for that. And, you know, when you look at colleges, I know there's a lot of them around here, we talked about ways to get them involved. And again, it's about the experience, like bring them in as student teachers, let them have a good experience. So when they graduate, they're like, that's where I want to go. Will I make $500 more, $500 less? I don't think they really care. I think they want to go where they're going to have a good experience. And that, that would be how we would recommend those things, just ideas for those, and I won't read them all, you have them and probably already know them. The third thing we talked about was being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars, which we always want to do, obviously, but moving into the times that we're looking at now, it's even, becomes even more obvious and apparent. This was something that I discussed a little bit with Ms. Moss. We talked about balancing the budget in my 10 years being on the committee. Every year I come in, and there's usually a presentation about this is the budget that we adopted that year, but then, and we were going to have a very large deficit, and then lo and behold, at the end of the year, we had no deficit. Woohoo! Which is great, super excited that we were able to do that. But maybe now we can move on to the next step and look at figuring out how to address that and figure those things out in the, in the beginning, so then we can be really strategic about how we take advantage of those dollars that we didn't end up using anyway. And so just looking at being able to do a balanced budget from the beginning. And then the last thing we looked at was the SIR funds, which of course is a huge deal, a temporary deal, but a huge deal. So, and you'll see in just a second how we hope that you'll be able to incorporate those in. So those were really all the things we talked about, and then these were the three recommendations that we came up with, and I'll just read them for you, they're kind of wordy, and I apologize. Given that we are still dealing with the effects of a pandemic, and given that the emotional well-being of both students and staff is urgent, and given that SIR funds are available, we recommend that the Board of Trustees look at ways to utilize SIR funds to provide immediate resources necessary to meet the emotional needs of students, and as well as alleviate additional burdens placed on teachers and staff. And that was a lot of words, but hopefully it gets the meaning across. And then our second recommendation was, given that staff and teacher shortages are real and rising, and that SIR funds are available, we do recommend that the Board of Trustees invest significant SIR funds into strategic staff recruitment and retention efforts like those we just discussed, and the things that you'll find out when you do go have those conversations with those teachers. And then the third recommendation was, given that SIR funds are available but have a definitive end date, we do recommend that the Board of Trustees work to approve a balanced budget in the upcoming fiscal year, focusing on ways to utilize the SIR funds to help bridge any gaps temporarily while working towards long-term strategies for sustainment of successful initiatives funded in the short term by the SIR funds. Basically, what we were trying to say is you have kind of a unique opportunity here to take some funds and put them in places that will meet short-term needs, and then we feel like probably you're going to find out that some of those are long-term needs. And like everything else, even in our home budgets, if you find out something is important and you, it works, and it's successful over the couple of years where you have this little extra shot of money, then we'll find ways to fund it, because when, when things are important, you do. So those are the three recommendations, and that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Mason, and to the entire committee, especially the committee members here. As one of the trustees, and many of us have gotten to attend many of your meetings, job well done on leading an outstanding committee. It was not the easiest to lead. You had virtual, you had in-person. Like with anything, we always talk about chaos the pandemics caused, it's things like this that make it even harder to administer that. But as this committee was coming together, and you look, y'all came back with recommendations of emotional needs to students, staff recruitment and retention, good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and a few recommendations, those are the things we kept hearing. And so it means a lot that you guys also identified and have some strict recommendations, which I think are all very strong recommendations. This committee, over the years, has made huge recommendations, and this board takes it very serious and tries to implement those recommendations. And I think from a timing perspective, with a new strategic plan being finalized, it is a perfect time to make some of those recommendations, and I think these are realistic expectations and recommendations. So let me just say thank you on behalf of the board for the outstanding work, this committee, and Ms. Moss, you and your team. This is no small task for staff to administer and work, but it is a critical factor that this board takes very important of community feedback from this. So at this time, I would open it up if any of my colleagues have any questions for that. I don't know, I can't see the screen. I don't know what I'm supposed to hit to see. I don't see Ms. McMurro, but hold on. Oh no, I can't get my screen.
Am I on? Okay. Ms. Mason, thank you so much for your leadership, for your years of dedicated service on FFC. Ms. Mason, thank you so much for your leadership, for your years of dedicated service on FFC, and to everyone on the committee. I have only been to two FFC meetings as a trustee, because I'm newly elected. But it was immediately evident to me how every single person on Financial Futures wanted to invest in people. And I just want to echo the sentiments of Mr. Hogg that this has always been, you know, number one focus and should be the number one focus. But there's no better time. There's really no better time to have that conversation. And I'm very grateful that it, that it aligns with a lot of the goals we're mapping out for our strategic plan. And thank you for your thoughtfulness and for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And Ms. Mason, what a great presentation. And congratulations on leading a great group, and thanks for everyone. And I'll also echo my colleagues' comments on, thank you for talking about investing in employees. And the, you know, we've asked a lot, as you said, we've asked a lot of our teachers. We thought last year was hard. This year's were turning out to be hard for a whole new set of reasons. And it's imperative that we continue to invest in them. And we also know, before the pandemic, we were looking at a, a downward trend in the number of students who are going into the teaching profession. And so there already was labor shortages for teachers. And I think, you know, on one of your recommendations, have that long-term focus and, and look at those kids already in high school. And I absolutely agree. We've got to, we got to get them interested. What a positive and wonderful career choice, fulfilling career choice teaching can be. And we need to grab them in high school when they're experiencing just what a positive aspect. So kudos to you guys for recommending that. And, and then I would finally say, you guys did a really great job of honing every, all that big funnel of information. We always get in FFC down to really three core, big-picture recommendations that we are definitely going to look long and hard at, because they're very important. I agree with all three of these. One of the critical things on recommendation two is, you know, the ESR funds run out. So the challenge is how to take that and make it sustainable. And I think the things that you pointed out are a good way to, by focusing on recruitment of teachers now, that is something that is sustainable long-term, long after, we reap those benefits long after the ESR funds go away. So great recommendation too. I wrote notes on some of the other ones. But yeah, that's it in a nutshell. Great, great job to the committee and those that helped out. And I'll probably pick up the phone and talk to our principal back there in the back of the room, who has plenty of great ideas.
Yes.
So.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, she knows, I, you know, I can be a little long-winded. I've served with her on the committee before I was on-
Yes.
Up here. So anyway, Ms. Mason, and again, the whole committee, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. I mean, Mr. Wilbanks recruited two teachers just tonight. And, and they can start subbing if they're only a sophomore, so we're good. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. I, I was actually going to be, not even call up Dr. Varnell. I was actually going to ask Dr. Varnell to come down and share some of his nuggets of insight, you know, in person, and put him on the spot. But I'm not, I'm not going to do that, not going to do that now. Ms. Mason, thank you for the presentation. It, it was really neat seeing you up here presenting as the chair. We go back maybe to the 2011 or 12 FFC, which is when I got started with this. And Mr. Wilbanks was on it then. And it's a great, it's really a great experience that I would recommend anybody in the community to learn so much about how staff approaches issues here, and just the sheer breadth of things that go through, you know, the process every day to make each day get pulled off successfully. It's just really an incredible process, and to distill it down to, you know, a couple of meetings is really quite an accomplishment for our staff. And so just want to commend staff for continuing this committee. I think it serves a very important purpose to get feedback from the, the community, but also provide a learning experience for, for folks in the community to see what, what goes on here. And it's also an important committee, because if you look at the 2019 recommendations, I mean, this is something the board takes seriously. All three of these recommendations have had, from the 19 committee, were acted on in, in the last two years despite COVID. And pre-kindergarten is something that we're continuing to, to look at expanding. In the near future, we got the VATRE passed, and, and we've consolidated a few campuses as part of the 19 bond. So I would be interested in how, in if you can speak to any specifics on, you know, these are, these are things that I think everybody here would agree with, and really the hard thing is, is, you know, the how. What were some specific recommendations on, that, that you can remember? Restructuring the workday to give teachers more time back? Because that's, that's something we hear, hear frequently. But, you know, there are only so many hours in, in, in the workday to give back to teachers. And with all the demands, I think everybody's trying to, to crack that nut. And if there's some good suggestions on there, you know, I think we'd be really open to them.
Well, I am going to actually embarrass Dr. Varnell and ask him to come up here, because he actually was, that was his recommendation, and he spoke it so well. Do you mind sharing with him really quickly what you shared with us? And, and by the way, every teacher in the room was like, amen to him.
Good evening, everyone. I, I simply think that it's worth considering what possibilities there are to recapture what is our most precious commodity. If you ask any teacher, what do you need? It's always, the answer is always time. And I think there are creative options, and there's certainly limitations that we have, and we have to consider all the ramifications. But some of the creative options would be if there is a way to capture a planning day for a teacher once in six weeks. And we're doing some of those things now, but we're having to do that through what I believe is our greatest challenge right now, which is a staffing shortage. And the ramifications of staffing shortages are not just, hey, we don't have enough subsidy. They reach far beyond that. And so anything that we can do that maximizes time and also gives our people the time they need to plan together. It's not just about, hey, here's some, here's a bucket full of time, but it's about what do we do with that effectively? There are some terrific practices that are going on in our district. And I think it would be an absolute travesty if we ended up returning to where we were before the pandemic. This is a beautiful opportunity for an inspired future, and I think we have to think creatively. And I think we have to use all of the resources that we have, including the people that are in the trenches, and including all of the folks who work together, and the community. It's going to involve creativity, and I'm not here to say that I have an answer, because I don't. But I think that the answers are within our district. I think we need to capitalize on that, to find time. That's what teachers say they need. We need time. When you go into the classroom right now, that is only part of their workday. They're working before school, after school, on the weekends. And this is pretty consistently. It's not the superstars, it's everybody. So anything that we can do to capture that, I think is time well spent. Do I have a specific recommendation? Dr. Cavassos will be able to answer that. But I think ultimately, anything that we can do to really flesh out what are the options in that lens is time well spent.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Varnell. And I appreciate sharing that. I didn't want to call you out in front of your boss. And, and also, I'm sure you've got, got stories you could, could share about me, since you've been principal to, to two of my kids. And we'll just, we'll just leave that alone.
I'll excuse myself on that note.
I will say, one of the things I think that came up amongst several people was a little bit of what we talked about too, was just not so much taking away their duties or anything, but alleviating things that weren't initially or originally supposed to be part of their job anyway. You know, just, you know, if, if counselors had assistants that could do some of the guidance tech stuff, and they would have more time to counsel. If, you know, teachers had more support for, in the classroom, for maybe a child, one particular child who's having a lot of trouble. And these are things they've told me, I'm not a teacher, as you know. But just things I've heard, you know? Sometimes it was not just about, like he said, another block of time. It was, some of it was about alleviating things that would free them up to better be able to do their planning and do their grading, and their, all the things that they need to do.
And, and that's, I mean, it's a great, great recommendation, a great time to, to dive into it, because you could look at, you know, you focused a lot on the ESR funds, and, and it's a lot of money. But we only get it, we only have it for three years. And, you know, some folks would be like, well, how do you, you know, what are you going to do with that money? Because it's only for three years. How do you build sustainability with that? And I think you and Dr. Varnell are exactly right, that maybe this is an opportunity that's been disruptive, that we can look at some of the things that maybe have been job creep or mission creep in some areas, and, and figure out ways to efficiently approach it with a, with a new eye, because we have temporarily some resources to buy us time and staff to do that. And so I look forward to going through this in more detail and figuring out what some recommendations are on those specific areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. I want to thank you so much, Ms. Mason. As Chair of the FFC for the Board, I reached out to you in hopes that you would serve as the Chair. And you have done everything right. Thank you so very much for agreeing. I know it was a big undertaking, but you have done a great job. And, and I appreciate you so much, and all of your committee. And as a teacher, I certainly appreciate the recommendations that you have made as far as more time for the teachers and, and things like that, and the social-emotional growth of the students. I think that is so very important. But thank you so much. I know this has been a lot of hard work, but you've handled it beautifully. And please know that you're appreciated.
Thank you. You're kind.
Thank you. Dr. Reich, you're jumping in at the last minute. Dr. Reich.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. Ms. Mason, I've known you a long, long time. Thank you very much for leading the committee. And as I'm not going to reiterate anything, except tremendous appreciation for all the staff time and investment for the, the huge data dumps in education sessions, and for the committee members of our community that are dedicated to be interested, involved, and, and helping us move forward in the district. My question for you is simply, throughout your time and throughout this past year or two in the process, is there anything as far as recommendations that you have for us for improvement or enhancements to the process? To make the meetings better, to make the, the opportunities for you to interact with the board? Anything at all that you, you may have that, either on your own or that had come up that, you know, through the committee work itself?
That's a big question. I will say that I feel like, I, I think we've had this conversation with Mr. Wilbanks in the past over this committee. I think we've evolved a lot in 10 years. And it's been really nice to, they've really started honing in on helping the committee to have a definitive process and a definitive end goal. And we've done it better this year than I think we've ever done. And I really honestly, I'm going to be really honest, a lot of that is due to Darla. She's done a really great job of helping me in this process. And she has a lot of really great ideas. She brings a real new and fresh perspective to the whole process. And it's been a lot of fun doing it alongside of her this year, and just hearing her, you know, she, she came into it with not a lot of, well, with no real background in, in what we were doing. So she was just completely fresh to the whole process. And it was, it was refreshing to hear her input and her intake on, you know, why, why do you do this? What are we doing here, you know? And so it was really a great growing experience through that. I would say my recommendation would just be to continue involving as many different people as you can. You know, I, I, sometimes I think, it's, I, I loved doing it for 10 years. And I think if you can get people that will do it for that long, let them keep doing it. But, you know, getting out there and getting new people involved, because it's such a great learning experience. Like Justin said, you're, you, you learn so much about the district. I mean, I came on because I was a mom of a seventh-grade kid that was on a football team with, you know, 500 kids on the team and two coaches or something. And I was like, I got to go talk to somebody about this, and thought I had some great agenda, you know? Which, by the way, the committee did recommend additional coaches, and you did it.
There was a little more than two coaches, Ms. Mason. Let's not project.
That might have been a little bit, because I did.
I get nervous when those things-
There also weren't 500 kids. But anyway, you know, I came on it thinking I had some sort of agenda or something. And it's been such a great learning experience. And I have become, I, I, I ask any of my friends, I am the biggest cheerleader for Arlington ISD. And it's really totally based on having these, having this experience and learning how hard the staff works, and, and experience what, you know, the heart of the board is for these kids. And you just have a different perspective when you know people personally and when you experience the process personally. And so I would say, as, you know, as, as many people as you can get involved, the better. And then providing them a really definitive process and end goal, those would be my.
I, I appreciate that. And, and your, your response is, is not uncommon that I've heard over the years, that people come, some with a, a certain expectation. They, they look through or hear things about the district and what, you know, management, and have different ideas. And when they come on the other side of it, the eyes are open to wow. And for us as a board, our focus is to make sure that as a, a, a government school district, that it's full, full transparency for our community. And allow that for the, the greatest supporters and cheerleaders to the greatest adversaries. We, we've had all on, on our committees. And it's for that purpose, because it's, that's what our community deserves as, as taxpaying citizens. So thank you again for your work, and look forward to future work and recommendations as well. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Reich. And we took a little more time than we planned, but it was totally worthwhile. As, as you can see, this board takes this committee very seriously. I think almost every single board member has spent time on this committee. Be careful, Ms. Mason, you may have a school board member. That's the, that's the bad part of being on that committee. So, but we thank you and your entire committee for all your hard work and dedication, and, and these outstanding recommendations. Thank you. Next, we'll consider administrative ratifications and appointment. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And so tonight, I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment for the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Bebenzy Elementary.
Do we have a motion to approve the administrative ratification as discussed in executive session? Use your lights. No, I'm just kidding. I have a, a motion by Dr. Reich, and a second by Mr. Wilbanks. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, vote in the affirmative. Motion passes 6-0. Ms. Mason's being absent tonight. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And so I'd like to introduce Vanessa Rodriguez, Assistant Principal at Bebenzy Elementary. And you should see some information about Vanessa. She went to the University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies, UT Arlington for Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction Language Arts. Most recently, a student supporting interventionist at Foster, and has had a variety of, of teaching experiences, you can see from the screen. Congratulations to Vanessa Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, and Ms. Rodriguez. Welcome to more leadership in the ISD. And I always love seeing homegrown leaders be built up through our system and, and leadership. We all know what leadership means at each campus. Next, we'll move in to open forum for agenda items. As stated on the post of the agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the site are required to register at aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakerRequest, no later than 3:00 PM of the day. Ms. Benjamin, do we have requesters registered to speak regarding agenda items?
Yes, sir. We have seven registered speakers for this portion of the open forum.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. I will read this to everyone, and hopefully those, if there's any online, they are listening. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at individuals will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have two minutes to speak. And Ms. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. Please end your presentation. First, we will go to Ms. Cindy Caluca. Cindy, you're up. I always look for the what signs Ms. Cindy's creating. So Ms. Cindy, welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent, Vice President, members of the Board, everyone here tonight. I've changed my speech and I want to say what she said. I, I have a simple message tonight. You have the power. You have the power to keep it simple and save our schools. I have three suggestions. We were asking for suggestions. Number one, switch our report cards back to skills-based rather than standards-based. Make them simple and effective for everyone involved. Number two, support our students, our young students where they're at. Give them intensive tutoring, LLI, bridge classes, whatever it takes. Get them while they're young and give them that foundation they need to be successful and fly through the rest of school and feel good about themselves. Number three, take all the extraneous things off of our teachers and give us more time. And I restate my, you have the power. You have the power. Keep it simple and save our schools. I have an eight by 10 of this for each of you because I knew you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to miss it.
Thank you, Cindy.
My, my son, who is an art teacher at Williams Elementary, will workshop this morning.
I'm glad he is teaching art because he is talented on that. So thank you for the words. Next, we have Mr. Daniel Bennett speaking on TAD election. Mr. Bennett? Don't worry, your time won't start until we get ready.
I will not go into thanking the Board for hearing me because that takes up half of my minutes. Thank you. I will be sharing a series of events and would like each trustee to determine about whom I am speaking when I'm finished. On November 13th, I'm not a fan of three, four-hour meetings. On December 11th, late getting to the meeting. Quote, or reference, "We are getting into the weeds," cuts off BOD member calls for the question regularly to end discussions. January 15th, emergency conflict, doesn't attend the meeting. February 12th of 2021, beginning of the meeting, attempting to contact this member. Just got a text from this person, he's logging on now. He just finished a work meeting that ran long and he's logging on now. March 26th, I don't have all day to devote to this meeting. I like to do it within the next hour or so because after I have to leave for a meeting. Leaves for the meeting, phone call, comes back 33 minutes later, cast the vote. June 11th, 2021, absent, doesn't show up. August 13th, remote when everybody else is in person. What do all these instances have in common? This is the history of your nominee, Mr. Pampa, on seven meetings. I pose a question to this Board. Does your nominee have the time and the passion for this position? All the TAD meetings occur on Fridays. I have spoken to Wes Bullock, a TAD candidate who came before you at a prior meeting asking for all your votes. Mr. Bullock has pledged, if elected, he will dedicate all Fridays to TAD and will be punctual, prepared and stay until the business concludes as he will be representing your interests. Mr. Bullock does not work on Fridays and I'm asking you to give all 465 votes to Mr. Bullock this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next, we have Mr. Mark Davis about TAD Board nominee.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, Superintendent and all the people. I have to say I enjoyed thoroughly talking to you before because you were very attentive and warm and I'm impressed all over again with the Arlington Independent School District, particularly the homegrownness that you have going on, the longevity and the loyalty that you have. Every presenter tonight has been along that way and it's impressive. I was also impressed by the Students of the Month, Sergio. I noticed that he talked about time management and, and I'm here to say that when it comes to time management, there's few people as deep on that as my friend Wes Bullock and whom I'm here to propose to you as, as the best candidate. He may not be homegrown, he certainly is UTA grown, he's certainly Tarrant County grown and, and that's what we're looking at. We want good representation for Tarrant County and you guys have that responsibility. And I thank you for your time. I thank you for your consideration and I'm impressed by everything I see here. I thank you all for the jobs you do. That's all the time I need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next, we have Ms. Barbara Williams over Action Item C, Tax Collection Contract. Good evening, Ms. Williams.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Vice President Hogg, Dr. Kavasos, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, the opportunity to bid for the RFP and we'd like to thank the committee for their recommendation. We'd like to thank Ms. Moss for the opportunity to bid on the RFP also. And we'd just like to state in the interest of time that my team and I are here to answer any questions when you call the agenda idle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next, we have Ms. Elena Fernandez, Action IMC Delinquent Tax Contract. Good evening, sorry, good evening, Ms. Fernandez.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Elena Fernandez and I am a Partner Attorney at Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott. I stand before you and ask that you reconsider the decision regarding the delinquent tax contract. Many of you I've come to know personally via other organizations or through the many community service activities we participate together in. I'm not asking you to reconsider based on friendships, but as a partner of Purdue Brandon. I joined Purdue Brandon in October 2015 and Arlington ISD was one of the first accounts I was placed on as an Associate Attorney. I'm not sure if all of you are aware of exactly what it is we do, but here it is. We collect the delinquent property taxes for the school district. More specifically, we collect the less than 1.5% of the total levy that is turned over to us. The district does not pay Purdue Brandon to collect the delinquent taxes, but the residents and business owners that fall within the AISD school bounds pay our attorney fee. Purdue Brandon does not make money unless we collect on that less than 1.5% turned over to us. Purdue Brandon puts people before dollars. I'm sure you've been shown statistics that the other firm is the better choice because they claim that they can collect more, but I want you to know that the collection statistics between each firm is not egregious where a change is necessity to meet the bottom line. We speak about the importance of diversity. We talk about keeping business here in Arlington. So why change? Why change now? Is it because AISD is not happy with Purdue? We are the local firm comprised of minority women right here in downtown Arlington. We hire AISD students, residents, and support the district through foundations. We value people over lining our pockets. I'd like to ask all of you to take a moment to reflect on what inspired you to run for AISD School Board. I know that those of you representing AISD are still putting students first. Again, I stand before you and I ask that you reconsider the decision regarding the delinquent tax contract.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Next, we have Mr. Ben Parsons, Request for Proposal Delinquent Tax Collection Form. Good evening, Mr. Parsons, and we'll wait till you get up here. Please go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Kavasos, Vice President Hogg, members of the Board. My name is Ben Parsons Jr. and I'm a partner at the Purdue Brandon Law Firm. Purdue Brandon is the best choice for Arlington ISD. When my family moved to Arlington when I was nine years old from the north of Liberia, I had to adjust to learning a new culture. Arlington ISD acolyte me to the United States like no other school district could have done. I excelled in my studies and activities through Williams Elementary, Alstoria High and Seguin High School. When I joined Purdue Brandon, I had the opportunity to represent and give back to Arlington ISD, the school district that shaped my form during the years. Full circle, I sold resale properties for the school district amounted to over $1 million. I pursued and collected over $1 million for a multi-billion corporations facility located here in Arlington. I have served students of the school district by mentoring student interns in our law firm. I coached a mock trial team at the Dan Doppler Career and Technical Center. I've spoken at various career days and career fairs around the district. I served in the Ware Foundation. I served the Arlington Public Library Friends and Foundation Board. What Purdue Brandon does as a law firm is quality legal representation in all facets. There has been no criticism from the district about the work that we have done for Arlington ISD. If you select the other law firm located in Fort Worth, you won't get that level of service. Purdue Brandon prides itself on our ethical history. We are local to Arlington, so we will not have to hire a local counsel with zero years of delinquent tax collection experience to represent the district. If you say no to Purdue Brandon, you're saying no to me. A proud part of your district, your former student who walked those hallways, I sat in those classroom desks, I played those playgrounds, but despite what your decision you make here today, thank you for the opportunity to represent Arlington ISD. We will always welcome the opportunity to represent Arlington ISD in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Next, we have Ms. Elizabeth Calvo talking on Action IMC Delinquent Tax Form. Good evening, Ms. Calvo.
Good evening. Vice President Hogg, members of the Board, Dr. Kavasos. My name is Elizabeth Calvo and I'm the Managing Partner of the Arlington Office of Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott. I come to you tonight for an ask. I ask that you take no action on Action Item C to discuss and approve delinquent tax firm, reopen the RFP process and allow us to make a presentation to the full Board at the next Funds Board meeting. This ask is not unreasonable and here's why. The fact is that months ago, less than a year ago, we had administration support to enter into a multi-year contract. There were no issues or concerns that were brought to our attention and here we are with no information as to how we even got here. We have never received any negative feedback from the district. Given our 38-year partnership, all that we ask is for an opportunity to fix any issues that were existing, if at all. We've worked hard to do what's best for the district and we've worked even harder at being what is best for the district. Our Arlington office is as diverse as AISD, as you saw earlier today, and we work with students, we provide internship opportunities and we also provide jobs to numerous of your, numerous students that graduate from the district. Having Purdue Brandon as your delinquent tax attorneys during the ongoing global pandemic provided you the reliable, consistent results that you've come to know and trust, even when the world was at a standstill. We work closely with your constituents, providing them solutions with empathy where other firms do not. Knowing that your taxpayers, like the rest of the world, are still in recovery mode, we worked very closely with them and diligently to help families stay in the district. We want businesses to stay in the district. We don't offer a one-size-fits-all solution for your delinquent taxes. We're simply people dealing with people. With all due respect to the Evaluating Committee, the committee does not have the authority to govern the district and vote on this contract. This Board does. Again, I ask that you take no action on recommendation for delinquent tax from before you today and table this item for further consideration so that both firms can make presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvo. That is all I have left for registered speakers. Ms. Benjamin, am I missing anyone else or is that all?
That's all for this portion. The others are signed up for the next portion, the open forum.
Gotcha. I've got three for non-agenda items. Thank you. Next, we'll move to action items. Action Item A, Consider 21, 2022, Campus Performance Objectives and District Scorecard. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And so tonight we bring a presentation related to our campus performance objectives and our district scorecard. And this is really a continuation of a conversation as the Board has adopted district goals, monitoring calendar, and so we move on to campus performance objectives and the scorecard. Scorecards intended to summarize some of this that the Board has already adopted, but also introduce other areas of interest for the district and our performance. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Brown to start us off in this presentation and lead us through it. So thank you, Dr. Brown.
Of course. Thank you. Good evening, Vice President Hogg, members of the Board and Dr. Kavasos. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to speak about our campus performance objectives as well as the AISD scorecard. So just to kind of start off, I guess, frame the work that we'll talk about today is our purpose for our improvement plans and our performance objectives is just to make sure that we have, we're focusing on systematic improvement, especially with so much unfinished learning that we're having to tackle, making sure that we are strategic and that we are aligning our efforts at our campus level. And so as you talk, as you think about a system alignment, we wanted to make sure that our campus performance objectives are aligned to all the work that we're doing in our system. So of course, our strategic plan is an anchor that we are using to plan our performance or plan our strategies, if you will. You know that we are in the process right now of, of writing and recommending strategic plan strategies for the next five years, but we have our district improvement plan. So we are using that as an anchor as well. We've already approved the district improvement plan, performance objectives that you all approved at our previous meeting. Our district scorecard we'll talk about today, which also gives an opportunity to set annual targets around academic performance, experiences and efficiencies we want to make sure that we tackle as a system. And that leads into ours campus improvement plan and our performance objectives. Again, those priorities are aligned with targeted needs, goals and outcomes. And what you'll see as you peruse those campus improvement plans is they are very individualized to the campuses and what their specific needs are and they do vary across our district. So the vision, of course, we all know is that all of our students will graduate exceptionally prepared for college, career and citizenship. And one way we are looking to continue that forward trajectory is our DIP and CIP targets. At our previous board meeting, you all did approve those targets and if you'll recall, we have the DIP targets are around eighth grade reading and mathematics. We have five-year goals. We've broken those out into annual goals that we'll continue to monitor. Also, English one and two are a part of our district improvement targets for reading. As relates to mathematics, it's also eighth grade and Algebra I and just ensuring that we are increasing the percentage of students who are reaching the approaches grade level in the next five years. Again, annual targets for each of these, these targets that we have. And then, of course, our required HB3 goals, you know, those are around third grade literacy and numeracy as well as our CCMR targets that we have. So just, just a real quick review there for our early literacy, third grade reading, our five-year goal is to move from 57% to 74% by August of 26. And if you look at our third grade numeracy goals, we are looking to move from 45% meeting approaches to 73% in the next five years. And our last HB3 goal, goal is around CCMR. So again, a huge part of our accountability and ensuring that our kids are ready for college, career and citizenship is to ensure that we're doing the best job that we can to get our kids to get at least one CCMR point, well, only one CCMR point, and that's to move from 44% to 56% in the next five years. So then we talk about our campus improvement planning process and you all know, of course, every year we bring our CIPs to you. And so I'm going to kind of just walk through the process for campuses to create their CIPs and then some data that they use to consider their targets and then that process that they engage in. So these are our targets for our current strategic plan is making sure that we're focusing on academic achievement, college readiness, our leadership and workforce readiness. And so those are key areas we wanted to make sure are aligned with our campus improvement planning process as well. So our campuses in the last several weeks have spent quite a bit of time, first getting trained by Dr. Lopez and her team, really helping them understand how to set goals and some specific outcome-based measures they should be considering when they're writing strategies. Then the principals spent time with their leadership team and extensions of their leadership team and really conducting a comprehensive needs assessment. We all know the needs are significant right now and so making sure they're focusing on the highest priority levers that they can, you know, go deep and not, maybe not go as wide, but go really, really deep with a couple of good, good strategies to support their efforts. The leadership team, of course, looking at that data, Dr. Lopez's team provided plenty of data for the campuses to be able to look through, again, specific targets by campus, by student group, by content and by grade. So lots for them to pour through and to make sure they're making key decisions that will help move their work forward. The SPD team, SBDM, excuse me, team collaborated to make sure that there were, if there are any areas of refinement or things to consider in the CIP, that they also have a voice in this process. or things to consider in the CIP, that they also have a voice in this process. And then we asked our EDs, who are responsible for the learning community, to take a look at those CIPs, provide any individualized feedback, and then, of course, we shared those plans with you. I do want to say it's important to note, those plans are pretty fluid. So even as you may have looked at those plans on Monday, there may have been additional tweaks Tuesday or Wednesday. There may be some additional tweaks, of course, in the coming weeks as we continue to make adjustments based on the needs our data outlines for us. So part of the work that we've engaged in really the last few years around school improvement. So this really is a part of all of our improvement planning process now. Initially, it was only for our schools who were in school improvement, whether they're a D or an F school. We wanted to make sure all of our campuses were focusing on the effective schools framework. There are five prioritized levers. We wanted to really make sure they were drilling down into to be able to determine what's a prioritized lever, one or maybe two, that you really want to go deep with in the coming year that you'll be able to kind of narrow your focus and attention to. And so just to review, strong leadership and planning, and there are specific indicators and strategies under each lever that they were able to go into more specifically. Lever two is around effective, well-supported teachers. What does that look like on your campus? Three is around a positive school culture. That also includes not only the student-staff, but the parent connections as well. High-quality curriculum. What, how does that look at the systems level to make sure we're pushing out to the needs of our teachers and what their specific requests and needs are? And prioritize lever five is around effective instruction. So how are we supporting teachers, whether through coaching, conversations, to be able to help increase their instructional capacity? So I referenced this a little bit earlier today, but I really was, we were really pleased to see the types of data the campuses were able to pull through. So if I'm a specific campus, I'm, let's say, Carter Junior High School because they're one of our campuses here. I have a list of seventh and eighth grade data targets for the next five years for every single specific student group, whether it's special education or our English learners or emerging bilinguals now called, so that you can really be able to see where are specific gaps in our data that we might be able to focus. And what happened is the campuses then used that data and that process to determine what do we want our overall goals to be for our campus. Some you'll see in those CIPs may have a grade level and content-specific goal. They may have a goal around seventh grade math. Some may have an overall mathematics goal. Some may target specific student populations. Wanted to make sure they had the autonomy to be able to determine what are the specific needs for our campus, knowing that there is still an overall goal that we're expecting you to hit. Because those campus performance objectives, if those targets are met, then that data pushes up to our district-level data. We want to make sure we hit those district targets. So then, again, making sure those performance objectives are aligned with our DIP goals, which were given to campuses several weeks ago. So even though I know that you all have access to all the CIPs, we just wanted to share. In elementary, junior high, and high school, again, you'll, as you see through these plans, the performance objectives are going to be very similar, maybe a three or four-point gain if it's overall performance. But then you'll see specific strategies, some aligned to the DIP, and some are just very specific to that campus and what their needs are. So this is very fine print, so I just wanted to, you know, just kind of share in elementary, junior high, and then high school. We have Seguin High School here, and you'll see elements of all of these are very different in terms of how they are identifying gaps and areas of opportunity for their campus. So as I referenced earlier, those campus DIP goals and campus HB3 goals then all marry, of course, to meet our district goals. And so whereas campuses do have autonomy into the types of strategies they're using, if they're using a, if they're looking at a grade-level goal or an overall goal, we do know that those overall goals are what's going to help us reach our district goals. So we also say that campuses are not alone in this work. If they write a CIP and they have specific supports they're requesting, our executive directors are on the campus bi-weekly to really help do their best to be able to support campus principals and leaders and ensuring they have the resources necessary. So the executive director support, campuses, our progress monitoring, and there's a cadence to which they are supposed to monitor that CIP and then make updates as to how they're progressing on that particular goal. And then district-level support, as there are additional resources that are needed, whether human or otherwise, how can we at our level be able to support principals and their teams in goal attainment? So here's an example of those quarterly updates and progress monitoring. And so as you, as they go into that Plan for Learning, our hub, they're able to say at each strategy, should we discontinue this strategy because it's not one that we think is going to be meaningful? Are we not making any progress? Should we continue but tweak it, or did we really accomplish the goal that we're setting there? And so they are to make those updates quarterly so that we can just kind of check into what their progress is. And it really is intended to be their roadmap throughout the year. And so we do ensure that they are tracking their progress throughout the year. So the second part of the conversation is around the district scorecard targets. And so there are three categories here for the scorecard targets. One is academic goals, our experiences, and then efficiencies. And here is the revised Arlington ISD scorecard targets for '21, '22. That left-hand column, the academic goals, those are all of our district improvement plan goals and our HB3 goals. So that's what you see in that left-hand column. And the right column, that first bullet, is really around our strategic plan. And as we are in that process now that we'll be able to share with you here in the next few weeks. And then we're expected to make sure that we are executing those phase-one action plans as a part of those experiences. And the second part of that is our leadership development, ensuring that we are expanding our core leadership development opportunities through our Aspire AISD programming. And that right column, as you can see, lots of efficiencies that the district is really wanting to focus on, from budget to finance to human resources, making sure that we are targeted and specifically focused on student enrollment as a strategy for us as well. And so those are the scorecards for our year. So administration does recommend that the board approve the campus performance objectives and the district scorecard. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you for that presentation and the diligent work that goes into campus improvement plans and the detail and thought that goes into each one of them. And I appreciate you, your team that works with you on this, and then the campus leadership and then the campus staff. Because it is, you know, the biggest thing we always say is make sure they don't feel like they're on an island, working, working on their own. And I think you and your team have exemplified that to bring schools back. And I think from our years on the board, this is probably some of our most focused plans we have to see. So with that, taking comments and we'll open some questions from colleagues. First one I see, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. I, when we looked at the district improvement plan, and I've commented before that I really appreciated the approach we're taking to not try to set some unrealistic expectation that we're going to bounce back from the COVID slide in one or two years. And so I'm glad to see that that, that approach has carried over to the campus improvement plans. I, I think that they are realistic, especially given to where we were pre-COVID, that this is a good first step of, of setting measurable, realistic goals that will tell us pretty soon whether we're on the right trajectory or not. I did have a question on the scorecard. The last bullet point on, under efficiencies is implement the 2019 bond program is developed with consideration noted for construction, market conditions, and strategic project scope modifications. Is this just a bullet point saying that we're going to continue to handle the 19-bond as we did the 14-bond and look for those efficiencies where we can find them? Or do we already know that we are noting in the, you know, going forward that market conditions are going to cause us to change the scope of some of those projects?
Dr. Cavassos, or Kelly?
So I think that's a, that's a combination of what you described, Mr. Chapa. And I'll ask Ms. Moss if she has information related to that, if you want more detail. But yeah, it's related to that. The conditions as they change, but also the, the project scope modification. So without going into all the examples, but sometimes we get modifications from city or other entities, or when we want to serve different needs at different campuses, that we bring the modifications. So we do it within a context, and I think that's, that's what that's trying to describe is we want to stay true to our bond focus and the programs we're developing, but also be able to adjust with board input to modifications based on need. For example, enrollment shift, right? Different programming that we want to start at different schools, with specialized schools and things like that. So it's all within a context, I guess, is the best way to describe it.
Okay, and I, I know that some of the early 19-bond projects were projected to come in under, under budget already. Is there anything that, are there any specific projects, major components of the 19-bond that we know are going to be modified from the last time that we looked at the 19-bond projects already?
None that come to mind at this point. We are in the very beginning stages of conceptual design at Carter, and that is a more complicated project based on the site and things like that. I don't necessarily anticipate there'll be a modification there, but if there was a prime candidate, that might be one because of, that's a big change in terms of even location and the things that we have to deal with in terms of a creek and things like that. But that's what comes to mind right now.
Okay, but those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, and thank you, Dr. Brown, for this. And I really appreciate the amount of work that went into each and every one of those CIPs. And I appreciate the autonomy that you guys gave to other districts because every, I mean, each individual campus, because every campus has got its own set of issues and things that they need to improve, and their culture is totally different. But yet, everyone still went through a rigorous process of needs assessment, looking at root cause analysis. I do have one question regarding that is I've noticed in quite a number of the plans, like in the past, that SWOT analysis of, and that root cause analysis, a lot of those problem areas were identified, whereas other plans just kind of focus on, hey, here's all the great things we do, we've been successful at, without any kind of clue of kind of where they analyzed areas they need to improve in, except for in the detailed analysis, the section that just talked about their goals and what strategies they were going to use to accomplish. Is that, I was just curious why that level of autonomy is opposed to each one of the plans clearly identifying those, those, the kind of, those key areas they needed to improve and the root causes for why those deficiencies were discovered?
Sure, well, there's certainly some variance across some of the plans, but the expectation is, and was, and still is, is that they use the ESF to really be able to do the root cause analysis, looking at each prioritized lever. Some did go into greater depth and detail about specific levers they are focusing on, but there is some variance there. And again, we're just continuing to work with campuses to ensure that, that they're being strategic about the focus for their campus.
Yeah, and with the effective school framework, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like in the two prior years that I've looked at the, or that we've been using the effective school framework, which is great, most of the CIPs listed specific strategies and actions under each of the prioritized levers. For instance, you know, 5 dot 3, use of DDI informative assessment, was always called out upon. And I noticed most of them just said, hey, we're going to use prioritize lever five and focus on that, but not talking about those foundational actions under each of those levers.
So with prioritize lever five, most of our campuses did focus on that. It is, that's where DDI lives, basically, our data-driven instruction practices. Coaching for high-quality instruction lives in prioritize lever five. And so that really has been the focal point for them. And with each prioritize lever, there are specific strategies under each one. All of them are not necessarily what a campus might need. They may only want to focus on the DDI processes, or they may only want to focus on the professional learning community aspect of prioritize lever five. So even with each lever, there, within each lever, there are still several kind of subcategories, if you will, for them to focus on. So there's still going to be some variance even between, you know, 12 campuses could have chosen prioritize lever five, and you still may see a focus on two or three different things within that particular lever.
Yeah, and, you know, just clarification of going down at least another area within each of the levers that they chose would have been, would have been nice. I'm, you know, the plans were all very detailed. I was just curious why they'd move away from listing those specific foundational actions or priority actions under each lever wasn't in a lot of the plans. A few of them did continue to include those.
We can certainly revisit that, Trustee Will Banks, and just ensure that we see, you know, more of what we need if there are specific schools that, that where it's lacking, we can certainly go back and revisit that.
Yeah, and I was glad to see, you know, that it looks like most of our campuses now are diving deeper on those strategies like DDI, whereas for years and years and years, it looked like we were, it was always the same, hey, we need to, you know, start learning to use, you know, DDI informative assessments. And now it looks like people are looking to expand their mastery of that strategy, which is great. And I noticed we were, we've contracted with Region 11 and their TIL group, or what is it, LA?
Call it LAFA, so it's lesson alignment and formative assessment.
Yeah, and so some people chose that and other people chose different ones, I guess, based on where their kind of level of expertise on that campus are. And so are we, my question is, with LAFA, are we starting to see real big returns on that investment in that training? Or have we just started?
Yeah, we just started at the beginning of the year. Some campuses started last year in the spring. This is primarily for our strategic support network that's involved in LAFA. However, we do have other campuses outside of SSN who are involved in TEAL, and they are still doing the DDI work. Our SSN campuses have more strategic coaching support, and then we have maybe three or four outside of SSN who are doing that. But you're right, there's been a concerted effort to make sure we were going deeper with DDI practices because everyone had kind of the base level understanding of it, but how can we go deeper in our knowledge and making sure reinforcing that with leadership teams and our executive directors as well?
Yeah, my guess is with the focus on accelerated learning, the ability that what Region 11 brings, correct me if I'm wrong, is that focus on those essential teaks and how to use that LAFA strategy for what really matters. If we're going to accelerate learning and get kids back up, it's going to be critical. So I'm curious to, you know, kind of monitor the use of that. I know not all campuses are taking advantage of that, but seeing, being able to measure what those outcomes are for that process and seeing if, yeah, just how well it's going to pay off in the future. And having said that, you know, one of the things you mentioned was, let me get back to the back of it. You know, in your quarterly updates and progress monitoring, and, you know, as a board, we're being very purposeful now and focusing most of our time at these meetings on student outcomes. And I think I would be curious, I know in years past, we haven't, you know, we've gone through this meeting where we're required to approve those plans, but we've never really had you guys come back and give us a broad level, high-level update on how well we're progressing and what trouble areas. And exactly what you said earlier is, you know, when we kind of thought, hey, we'll do strategy A, B, and C, and then halfway in say, well, C's really not working, we really need to focus on strategy D. Hearing how those plans are progressing and where we are on target, especially for when we talk about our TIP plans on those campuses that need targeted improvement. So, yes, if you could, we could add that to our monitoring calendar, that can carve out time for them on those quarterly updates when it makes sense, when we do have data, that would be great. And then my last question real quick, I know we're doing a lot of changes in East Arlington with Rourke and Knox going down. Did that cause any challenges when it came to doing kind of the, the early process, the SWOT analysis? Now that we're talking about a totally new campus that's, in a lot of cases, in a temporary location, which is going to provide its own set of challenges this year, that, you know, we've got a whole new mix of student bodies and combining campuses, it's quite a soup of trying to sort out, you know, which kids, where each kid was, and now they're at a new campus, and then what does that mean? and now they're at a new campus, and then what does that mean for our prospects in terms of student outcomes for that campus, given that's a whole new student body mix?
So, is your question about how well they were looking at the data?
Yeah, has that presented a lot of challenges that can cause potential variances in what we thought we'd be able to achieve? Anyway, it seems like it's going to be particularly challenging setting up a strategy, given that we've got, you know, when you've got one campus that still has pretty much its same student body year to year to year, same culture year to year to year. And we know culture plays a big part in the ability to improve a campus, and that's been thrown up in the air in East Arlington. So I'm, I'm just kind of concerned as we move forward, if that's going to provide any challenges for those campuses that are seeing that kind of disruption.
Sure. Consolidated schools are always a challenge, right, when you're bringing in kids from all different places and staff members. But the good part is, they were able to get baseline data from all the students and where they came from to have, to be able to look at that, to say, hey, let's kind of assess our needs where we are based on this data. And they also had some initial kind of common assessment data and some conversations they started at the beginning of the year. So, I mean, with any probably new and consolidated schools, that is a challenge, but they did have data. So that's why they had to focus specifically on the data to be able to help determine kind of what their strategies are going to be. And again, if they need to make any adjustments along the way, they can do that as they're still learning and growing together in this new space.
No, again, there was, it was clear there was a lot of work that went into those. And just for clarification, are we, so we're approving, what exactly are we approving tonight? The scorecard and all of the campus improvement plans?
The performance objectives.
Oh, just?
From the campus improvement plans. Not really the plans themselves, but just the objectives.
Perfect.
Right.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Will Banks, we got a, that's our official approvals. Ms. McMurdo.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. It might be too early to tell, but I was wondering if you and your staff have noticed any significant trends across campus improvement plans?
Just as I mentioned to Trustee Will Banks, I would say the biggest trend is lever five and just really focusing on how we can improve instructional supports for teachers, focusing on professional learning communities, data-driven instruction, and really kind of strengthening those. We know all the levers are important, that's why they're prioritized, but that's the priority one. And there are specific campus-level expectations with each lever, and there are also district-level expectations. And so how are we supporting effective instruction at the district level with our strategies and our DIP? So I would say that's the, that's the biggest trend I've seen is lever five being a focal point for most of our campuses.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Raish, you better hurry up. I'm not as nice as Ms. Mays up here.
I'm doing it deliberately for you, Mr. Hogg.
It's working, whatever you're doing. Go ahead, Dr. Raish.
Thank you very much for the information. I just have a couple of questions regarding the efficiency section of the district scorecard and whether that would be you or Dr. Kavassos jumping in, whatever's needed there. So on the develop and implement comprehensive strategies to increase student enrollment, that is something that is potentially very budget-sensitive and requires a decent amount of resources. And so my question, since we've already approved the budget for this year, that would seem to be a conversation that's already been in the works and perhaps has already been allocated within the budget, or are we looking at potential budget amendments coming to put the resources into this as necessary to achieve what these strategies would be? And because it's, it is beyond just developing, it's actually implementing them. So if you could expand on that?
Yes, absolutely. So we have it in the budget because this is, so just for context, because this may seem a little, in terms of the context of this scorecard, this is for this school year, obviously, we're in November, right, and we have adopted, the board has adopted a budget. But it reflects what's happening this school year. So the specific strategies are in the budget, but I'll kind of make note of some other strategies that have been kind of progressing, big ones that the board has already taken some action on, and that is our study of universal pre-K. That's a big strategy for, not only serving pre-K students, obviously, but increasing enrollment, because we know if they attend pre-K, non-eligible students, then they're more likely to continue with AISD. That's just a trend that we've seen over the years, and we know that that's possible. But it is a cost, obviously. So items like that, where the board has also designated Part of Fund Balance to support that, is important. And so at this point, I don't see any budget adjustments. Obviously, the board has opportunities to amend budget as well. But as far as that strategy, those are the big, I guess, the big ones. And the marketing department has budgeted, they budgeted for these campaigns, if you will, like we are currently under for transfer and specialized programs and things like that.
Okay, thank you. And as far as it being related to efficiencies, is that just essentially, we're going to have increased dollars and therefore it's not necessarily an efficiency, but more dollars allocated for spend on programming? Or how would it be tied specifically to efficiency?
Yeah, so it's, so it's a good question. The way it's tied to efficiency, and there's different ways to frame this, but generally so that we can be at higher capacity, if you will, in terms of our numbers. So if we have classes, not that we want classes to be very large, but if we have very small classes, we want to maximize the efficiency by increased enrollment so that we are maximizing the efficiency of our staff and our schools, et cetera. Now, this is not to say we want to go over capacity and things like that, but where there are schools or classrooms or grade levels, or particularly schools that are underutilized, enrollment is one way to maximize that efficiency, because we are staffed for certain numbers, and if those numbers don't come in, then one could argue that that needs some work on the efficiency side. And as you know, the staffing happens once a year for good reasons, right? Because you can't keep changing staff and contracts and things like that. So once you staff, you want to make, you know, kind of efficient use of all the staff and buildings and capacities and things like that. And those adjustments come really with enrollment changes. We do have, as you know, where we surplus, where we level, those things are really important to maintain that efficiency with our enrollment. But as enrollment increases, especially in underutilized schools or classrooms, et cetera, that is an efficiency for the district. That's why it's under there.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. The other one under efficiencies, the pursuit of alternative solutions on the Data Enterprise for finance and HR. So pursue can be taken in a very deep dive, as in we're going to acquire pursue, or just we're going to search, and it's a more of a study. So can you define what the intent is?
So the words are important. And for a district our size and really any organization, an ERP system, an HRIS system, any review of that really starts with a pursuit for alternative solutions. It is not a decision that we can make lightly, as you know, and you've been through many of these processes, Dr. Raish, you've served on the board. When you switch systems, we have to make sure that there's enough capacity, but also enough of the return on the switching of a system. So I don't anticipate this to be done necessarily, you know, from one year to the next. It does take a longer term if we're going to switch. What we do know, though, is that there has to be a review of the efficiency of the system we have now, because there are some elements that are gaps in our system with our ERP system. And we know any transition becomes very challenging for any organization. And maintaining the stability of finance and student reporting and all that is not something we take lightly. And it really is a team of Eric Upchurch and Darla and Scott Cale, et cetera, in looking at this. But the pursuit of alternatives is healthy amount of work, even for one year, because when you look at alternatives, you also have to look at what you're giving up and what you're actually going to gain, and is it something that can be transitioned with the current staff in terms of numbers and FTEs and things like that? So it is, it is, that pursuit of the alternative is probably a healthy amount of work for one school year.
Right.
Because it's not something we would take lightly. And we started it last year, and the pandemic with all the changes and things like that, even SRR3 and SRR2 and funding, again, not the right time, and you have to find the right time to even, even change if we're going to change. But it is an active pursuit of this, because we know that we need some efficiencies in our system that are not being yielded today.
So then is the year-end goal to have that determination made that our system, I think the discussion's been pretty readily available, that it is, there are deficiencies. So is the goal for the end of the year to say, okay, we have outlined every single one of those, and we're, now we can begin looking at the other vendors and opportunities out there? Or is the goal to have that as well as a good survey of what those potential vendors are to begin the talk of transitions for the next calendar year?
I think probably the, and this is going to sound like it's a simple thing to do, but it's not.
Oh, I know.
And I can go into as much detail and maybe get some assistance too from Eric, but I won't yet. One big outcome on this is to put out an RFP.
Okay.
And I know that sounds like, well, just put out what you want.
No, no.
And you know that it isn't, right? And so it goes with this whole analysis, the things we want to accomplish, the things we want the system to yield, the time it's going to take, the transition, the amount of years and things like that.
Right.
The guarantees, the staffing, all those things are built into that. So I do see that as one big thing in terms of that one bullet point.
Okay.
That would be happening this school year, is to develop that and actually put it out.
Okay. Okay, I, that's great. That's what I was looking for. And I don't know, I'm fine having, having that disclosure here and discussed in public forum that that's what we're looking for. I don't know if there's any need for a level of specificity in wordsmithing this, if there's any trustees that feel that way, that's fine, but I'm good with the way it is that way, with that expectation that we're looking at RFP at the end of this year. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. And someone who worked in the ERP and HRIS systems, trust me, all the vendors are going to know, and they're going to be swarming, and K through 12 is a very difficult ERP and HR system. Mr. Will Banks, all the lights are already done. Mr. Will Banks.
One needs to make a motion, and I would like to...
I will entertain a motion by all means, Mr. Will Banks, and take back anything I've ever said and apologize for that. Mr. Will Banks, please go right ahead, sir.
Well, how about this? I move approval of the 2021-2022 Campus Performance Objectives and District Scorecard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Will Banks, for that motion. And now I'd entertain a second. I saw a hand go up by Dr. Raish. I have a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Dr. Raish. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present vote in affirmative, motion passes. Ms. Brown, your team, thank you so much for that. See a bunch of folks still waiting in the audience. We've got two items, and they're both involve different folks waiting in the audience, so I'm going to stay in order. We'll go to action item B, consider approval of fiscal year 2020-21 independent audit. Ms. Hambrick? Okay, I wasn't sure. I knew it was one of y'all coming up here, so please come on up and join us. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Kavassos. The state of Texas requires the school district to have an independent audit of our financial information each year. Our audit was conducted by the firm Whitley Pan. We have two of our auditors here tonight. We have the audit partner, Selena Sarah Saris, and the audit manager, Erin Angel. And I would like to invite Selena up. She's going to do a presentation on the results of the audit.
Thank you, Ms. Hambrick. Vice President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Kavassos, thank you for having me here tonight to present the results of the 2021 audit. And before we go on, I want to thank your team for helping us get through this, this audit and make the November board meeting before the deadline. And I want to thank my team member, Erin Angel. She lives in, within the Arlington ISD boundaries, so she is a resident, and she and the rest of her team did all of the heavy lifting, Jado Martin, Zach Davis, and Rand Liu. So I thank them for their hard work and your management team throughout the entire process. As you know, and also, we met with the Audit Committee October 26th to discuss the preliminary results. We are still, you know, on, the results are the same that we presented to the Audit Committee, and now we're, of course, here presenting this to the full board. And as you know, the purpose of the audit is to issue an opinion on the financial statements, and the best type of opinion is an unmodified opinion, which indicates that the financial statement figures can be relied on by users of the financial statement, financial statements. In order to issue this opinion, it is a rather long process that started in the spring timeframe in March. We did our risk assessment, came back onsite in April and May, gained an understanding of your internal controls over key areas that we'll go over here in a bit, tested those key controls. After June 30th, 2021, when your team, financial team completed closing the books, we came back onsite in September and corroborated, confirmed, inquired, where inquiry alone is not sufficient, but also had to verify with third parties to ensure that the figures were correct all to, in an effort to issue the opinion. The control areas that are very important to us are human resources, payroll, accounts payable and procurement, and of course, information technology, because it feeds all of these other areas, including attendance and other revenue sources where cash may be collected, and of course, the overall financial close-in reporting, and then the major federal programs that we'll discuss here in a bit. Arlington ISD, once again, has earned an unmodified opinion, indicating that the financial statements are materially correct. There are no internal control findings as it relates to financial reporting, and no findings related to compliance. This is separate from federal compliance. This is state compliance, whether it's with your Public Investment Act, procurement compliance, or even attendance areas. Last year, we did bring a management, management letter to you indicating that there was some shortages in the bilingual education as far as spending, not that there were any, there wasn't any non-compliance, but it was the first year of the pandemic, so school districts across the state were struggling to spend these state special allotments. But you all have remedied that, and we didn't find that in fiscal year 21. As far as the federal programs are concerned, we tested the child nutrition cluster, adult education, SRR1 and SRR2. And as if you, as you've heard tonight, we will, you will continue to spend these SRR funds, and we will continue to audit them. And so these, you will hear of these programs in the coming years. You have earned an unmodified opinion over each of these federal programs, the process and documentation. And we're recommending that you improve the process and documentation over certain federal procurement procedures when, when you spend at a certain threshold. There isn't a finding to be reported to the Texas Education Agency, it's simply a verbal recommendation, and that is the extent of that comment. As far as general fund revenues are concerned, they totaled $577.2 million, which is an increase of $44.4 million from the prior year. Your, the bulk of your tax, your revenues are made up of property taxes at $347.7 million. Your state aid was $189.5 million, and there's always an inverse relationship between property tax revenue and your state aid. Other state revenues were $30.8 million, federal funding 5.3, and then other local funding at $3.9 million. When we look at the general fund, general fund revenue comparison from prior year by the various segments we presented in the previous pie chart, you'll see that property taxes were $299.2 million. And of course, last year, you approved, the voters approved the tax ratification election, and so that did create a... And so that did create additional taxes. Your state aid did increase slightly, but that also includes the hold harmless amounts and that was also transferred over to your S R two, which is a complex calculation that the Texas Education Agency performed. But that is included in, in those dollar amounts as well. Your federal funds did decrease in the general fund, not overall, because of the sh, uh, school health and related services revenue that made up the bulk last year, and it did decrease this year as well. When we look at your general fund expenditures, they totaled $547.4 million, an increase of $39 million. So while you increased your revenues, you also increased expenditures. But you'll see that the bulk of these expenditures are concentrated in instruction and related services, facilities, maintenance and operations at $53 million, and then instructional and school leadership at $43.3 million. The other areas for student support services were, which are just as important as instruction and related services, were $40.8 million. Student transportation at 14.4. I always like to point out that in the red portion of the pie chart, general administration is at 2%. Typically, most district, well, the Texas Education Agency indicates that any, any percentage greater than 8% is a problem, but you're well below that percentage. And I believe you saw that last year as well, when you saw your peer districts. When we look at your expenditures, current year to prior year, you'll, you will see that the, the, the largest increase from the 2020 fiscal year was in the area of instruction and related services, which is what you want to see always. When we look at your budget, you'll see that your actual revenues were $577.2 million. They were less than budgeted amounts by $9.2 million. That does include insurance proceeds from Winter Storm Uri as well. Your actual expenditures did come under budget by 500, uh, by, excuse me, by $31 million, which is 5% of your budget. So you're still budgeting, $31 million is, you know, in most people's eyes is a large amount. But when you compare it to the overall budget of $547 million, it's within 5% of that budget. And again, not knowing what the, the state was going to do with the S R funds, hold harmless, it's kind of difficult to do that when they do it in September of the, of after your fiscal year is over. So it's always a guessing game. As much as your management team can estimate, use the templates for state aid, the state ends up doing different things that's really out of your control. But you did have the necessary resources to pivot as needed as the state made their, their decisions and changes. Your revenues did exceed expenditures by $22.1 million. Your tax collection rate on the current levy was $98.7 million. And if we look at your total fund balance is $244.5 million. You have unassigned fund balance totaling $164.3 million, which is available for appropriations. You've assigned $77.2 million, and that's for July and August federal dispersments and any other July and August expenditures that you may have. You know, you don't, you don't collect a lot in July and August relative to say December or January. So tax collections are, are lower in these months. So you need the cash flow and the fund balance to continue operations. Same with the S R fund, you all know the, the larger amount that has been allocated to Arlington ISD. With like all federal programs, you have to pay for those expenditures first out of the general fund and then get reimbursed. So you have to have appropriate cash flow and sufficient fund balance in order to, you pay for it first and then you get reimbursed. So I think that's important to note, that that's required to run any federal program within a, a school district. When we look at your expenditures compared to your unassigned fund balance, and the reason we focus on unassigned fund balance, one, because that's available for appropriations, but the Texas Education Agency also looks at this. The Government Finance Officers Association also looks at this and, and indicates that 90 days is optimal. So it takes your total expenditures, it's indicating that if Arlington ISD were to continue to spend at $547.2 million expenditure level, how long would that fund balance last if all revenues were to cease? The answer is 109 days. The, the, the danger zone would be 30 days and that amount equates to $45 million. 90 days or $135 million is the optimal, but you've exceeded that by 19 days. So again, it's an unusual year and the coming years too, in order, that you will need that additional fund balance. And you also have that assigned fund balance available to you. There's two other programs and funds that I'd like to discuss because you do adopt a budget and amend it throughout the year as required by state law. The child nutrition program, it had actual revenues of $2.7 million and they were more than, more than the budget amounts by $300,000. And your actual revenues were $8.7 million. They were under budget by $3.3 million. You also operate a summer feeding program and the way the state funded your child nutrition program was through this additional, this additional funding source. You might not have seen it in the child nutrition fund, but it's still aggregated. But the way you adopt your budget is solely Fund 240, if we want to get into account codes. And the summer feeding is accounted in Fund 242. Your fund balance did decrease by $6 million. Your, your ending fund balance is still $6 million as well. Your debt service fund, actual revenues were $97.6 million and they exceeded the budget by 300,000. Your actual expenditures were under budget by $3.7 million. This fund is solely to pay the principal and interest on your outstanding debt. So you were under budget in this area. Your fund balance did increase by $4.3 million. And you have an ending fund balance of $59.1 million. Because you are a June 30th year end, again, property taxes do not come in at the level that you see them in, in, in December and January. But you had to turn around in August of this year and make a $21.8 million interest payment. So it, it, it looks like you have more than enough fund balance, but that's needed to turn around and quickly make that, that payment. Where if you were an August 31st year end, that would not be the case. Your fund balance would be lower because all of those payments would have been made by August 31st. And I, I won't go over all of these, these items in the next slides. But you did implement a new GASB standard, number 84, which evaluated your student activity funds and campus activity funds and placed them in different funding sources. The way you, the way the campuses and the, the, the student activity groups operate have not changed. It's simply an accounting matter. You did look at your capitalization methodology and various projects, which resulted in a positive item of bringing on more assets as capital assets onto your statement of financial position or net position. And it did increase your net investment in capital assets and overall net position. So it was a, a positive change. And then finally, your government-wide financial statements. These financial statements are seen or, or can be likened to a business where all of your assets, both short-term and long-term, as well as your liabilities are presented to get to a net worth for the district. And as you're aware, in the general fund and governmental funds, you don't present these long-lived assets or your long-term liabilities, but you do in these financial statements. So your total assets were $2 billion. Your total liabilities were $1.9 billion. So your net position totaled $103.7 million. I would like to point out, there are some very large liabilities, the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability that are included in there, but those are not your liabilities that you'll have to write a check for. Those are statutorily determined and actually determined by an actuary on an annual basis at the state level. Your proportionate share is determined by TRS based on the amount you contribute into TRS. And that is calculated compared to all other districts within the state. And then your percentage is assigned and that, then that percentage is used to arrive at this liability on your financial statements. You continue to contribute into TRS at the statutorily determined rates that's given to you by TRS on an annual basis. But again, you will not have to make payments directly for these liabilities. And the rest is, is nothing to, it's, it's required communications about accounting estimates. There's nothing that we noted that was out, not in accordance with standards. And we, we disclose your significant policies. We didn't have any disagreements with management or encounter any difficulties. Of course, with the pandemic, your team worked hard to get, gather all of the information that they needed as well and to, to make all of these, implement all of these changes throughout the year. The last piece of information that we obtained from your team was a management representation letter, which indicates that they gave us everything we needed to complete this audit. And any, any responses or questions that, or responses we gave to your team as a result of any questions or, or advice that they sought, our responses were not such that, that we were hoping that we would be retained as your auditors. If the answer is no, the answer was no. The answer is yes, good news. But your team, if the answer was no, the, your team understood that. And they're always very conservative. So I appreciate that because I'm also risk adverse. So I appreciate that. So that is all I have for you here tonight. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Selena, I'm glad to hear you say you're risk adverse. I thought nothing less over the years that I've known you. So let me just start by thanking you and Aaron and the entire Whitley Penn team, as well as our staff for all the work that came into that, who, who worked through this audit. As the Chair of the Audit Committee, who had the option to sit down with you guys and review this in detail. This is one of the most important things the board gets back on our financial stability and assuring, you know, we think we have a great staff, but it's also, we got to double check. And there's a reason we have external auditors for those reasons. We appreciate how you work. Mr. Chapa. Sorry, Justin, we hit your button again.
Oh, okay. Thank you, guys, President Hogg. I just, I had a question. If we can go back to the general fund revenue slide. This is more for, for an educational purpose, but you mentioned that there's an inverse relationship between state aid and local property taxes. Can you just explain that for a minute?
Yes, definitely. Thank you for that, Mr. Chapa. So the more, the more taxes that you collect, the state says, well, you've, you've collected your share. So they reduce your state aid. And that goes into a very complex calculation that T E A does and that your management team can try to estimate. But the primary driver too for state aid is average daily attendance. So while property taxes plays into this calculation, average daily attendance is the primary driver. But once you've, once they see that you've collected enough, they adjust the amount of state aid. Where you have districts across the state where property wealth amounts are very high, they go into a recapture state where they actually have to pay back their property taxes to the state that are then distributed back. So the more that you collect, the less state aid that you receive.
And that makes school districts different than most other government taxing entities, correct?
That's correct.
And, and our budgeting process is, is made more difficult by the fact that we have to account for the formulas and the changing ADA. And that's again, not something that some, you know, an entity like a, you know, a county or a city might have to deal with because they're getting all of the local tax revenue.
Yep, yes, sir. It's very complex and actually the Texas Association of School Business Officers is always providing updates. And actually from June through September, they were, and even October, they were continuously updating school districts on what the state was doing in relation to S R, which is a whole other topic. But even that was unexpected and all districts had to pivot and say, what do we do with this? There was webinars at the state level. We had to get in touch with how do we account for all of that? With property taxes, S R and average daily attendance being what it was this year, it was, it was quite complex, especially on the average daily attendance side where you had in-person asynchronous synchronous attendance. It got very convoluted, but your, your staff pushed through.
Thank you for explaining that. And I remember, I mean, Ms. Mason was here earlier and it was our FFC presentation, so it's appropriate to say this. But you know, when we got involved, when I got involved in FFC and, and projections would go up, and FFC pointed out that we have a history of projecting deficits and then ending up with surpluses. And I think it's because this district has always had such a conservative approach to its finances. But it's also, as, as Ms. Moss has explained and then Cindy Powell before her, it's really hard to sort of hit that target exactly, given all the variables that our type of accounting and budgeting goes through. And also the fact that it, as you mentioned, in the last few years, especially this last year and a half, there was so much unknown, it didn't give in time about what state funding we would get. For us, whether we would, we would have a T R E that passed, whether we would be held harmless, whether S R funds would come through. And so being able to accurately, as our staff does, hit that target year after year, I'm very impressed by it continually. And, and your data backs that up. If we can go to slide, the slide with the 2021 general fund expenditures.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm glad that you pointed out that our general administration is, is under 2% of, of our total expenditures. Also going back to my FFC experience, every year, there are folks who roll onto that committee and they're convinced that our budget is bloated and we have administrators all over the place. And oh my gosh, you know, there's just, let's cut the fat. And as long as I've been involved in district financial policymaking, since I was on FFC 10 years ago, our, I'm glad you pointed out that we're under a quarter of what the T E A would consider to be problematic for general administration. And that's been the case across the board for all administrative levels. There's different accounting when we look at our budgeting, there's central administration and campus administration and so on. But we have been consistently below state averages and especially for a district of our size. And again, commendable by the district to do that. And then every time I see a pie chart like this, I just can't help but point out, people want to know where our money goes. And if you, if you add up this pie chart between instruction, instruction, school leadership, student support services, student transportation and student co-curricular extracurricular activities, so your, your kids and your campuses, that's 85% of our expenditures. And then if you added facilities, maintenance and ops on top of that, which is keeping the campuses running, that's 95% of what we spend our money on. I mean, that's, that's, that's including utilities and, and just upkeep on the almost 100 facilities that we have. And so if you want to know where the money goes in this district, it's going to kids and campuses and keeping things going. 95% of our budget is directly to that. And so there's not a lot of wiggle room for anything else, including the fat. And then I just couldn't help but, but resist asking you, as a result of your conclusions, because it's been suggested recently that this district has difficulty paying its obligations. In your opinion, does the district have any difficulty paying its obligations?
As, as far as debt, what we see, a, a long-term debt, what we, we haven't found any issues through our testing, our sampling. We haven't noted any of that. So I, so I don't know.
That's sufficient for what I asked. Thank you.
And, and one other thing, Mr. Chapa, on the revenue, you made a good point on not knowing. I'll just make this. We did disclose that the Texas Education Agency made it known that as of September 2nd, they would not hold harmless, hold districts harmless for average daily attendance in 2022 like they did last year. So another reason to have these reserves, not knowing what ADA is going to do.
Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. And good point. I think it's always worthwhile to point out that, you know, just if you look at the campus alone, not even counting leadership on campus, it's 72% of that spend. So it's, and I like your stat of going up into 85 in the 90s because it is true from that reality. That is all. Thank you. We have, hold on, we, we've got a motion, but she can sit down. So at this time, I would be more than willing, you ready to go? I get it. It's been a long day for everyone. So at this time, I would be more than willing to entertain a motion for one of my colleagues. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. I'll, I'll free form here a little bit on the motion. But at this time, I would move that we approve the fiscal year 2021, 20, 2020, 21 independent audit.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Do I hear a second? I have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Ms. Maroney. Further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. All those present vote in affirmative, motion passes 6-0. Thank you to Whitley Penn and all of our financial team, Hambrick and your team. Thank you for all that. Especially for our new team, our first group to do the audit. So thank you all for, on your new leadership team, doing that. Y'all did an outstanding job. Let me go to our next item, item C, discuss and approve findings, Government Code 2254 for contracting the legal tax firm, delinquent tax representation. Dr. Gavassos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And this evening, we bring for your consideration the delinquent tax firm recommendation. And so we have been engaged in this process over the course of several months and. And so we have been engaged in this process over the course of several months and Darla Moss and her team have been engaged with this. And we have a consultant, Mr. Feldman, who has been assisting with this process. So at this time, I will ask Mr. Feldman to, to come up and introduce himself and go through this, go through this presentation. Mr. Feldman, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Gavassos. Mr. Hogg, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be for, before you tonight. Just by way of background, first, let me. By way of background, I have been practicing law now for about 45 years. And during that time, I have primarily represented governmental entities, chiefly school districts. I also served as the City Attorney of Houston for five years from 2010 to 2015. I say all this because I want to point out that over the span of my legal career, I have advised numerous clients on the acquisition of delinquent tax collection services as I am advising you tonight and as I consulted for the school district on this procurement process. And, and the fact is, in, in advising clients over so many years regarding these types of services, I have come to know the firms, the law firms in Texas that specialize in this type of work quite well. And it's always been my role and my job to, to be a fair and partial umpire, call the balls and the strikes. Sometimes it comes down for one firm, sometimes it comes down for another firm. So I think we all recognize that delinquent tax collection services, it's a very highly specialized and competitive form of legal services. It's currently dominated by two firms, both of which are present tonight, and they were our two proposers in this procurement. And that's Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott, which we refer to as Purdue, and Limebarger Goggan, Blair and Sampson, that we refer to as Limebarger. They are both very highly qualified, they are both very experienced, they are both good at what they do. They both have represented Texas school districts for over 40 years in delinquent tax collection work. Should also point out, as I understand it, that Purdue, the incumbent, has performed this work for AISD for some 38 years, since 1980, in fact, with a, a brief interlude or perhaps respite from 2010 to 2012, when Limebarger had the contract. The last recompetition was in 2012, and Purdue is currently on a one-year contract that expires at the end of this calendar year. I was retained by the district in late July, and the first thing I did was to work with the district to form an internal evaluation committee. That committee has consisted of Darla Ross, the CFO, Alex Hamrick, your ED for Financial Services, Bridget Lewis, Director of Accounting, and Tammy Craig, your Senior Director of Business Services. At the same time, the committee was formed, knowing that Purdue and Limebarger were likely to be the chief competitors, in, in fact, the sole competitors in all likelihood. What I did was I reached out to both firms and asked them whether or not they had any suggestions for changing the RFP that was utilized by the school district in 2012 when it had its last recompetition. And in fact, I received input from both firms and in large measure included their suggestions in the RFP that was issued. We, we issued the RFP on September 8th. We had a pre-proposal conference on September 15th, and proposals were received on October 7th. Importantly, in putting together the RFP, as I have in all instances where I've done this, we sought to achieve a simple, uniform formula for reporting collection histories, recognizing that each firm's past performance would be a significant factor to be considered and that there was a need for a straightforward apples-to-apples comparison that we could look at, both in terms of the clients that they showcased and how they showcased them. In other words, how they presented their numbers. We wanted uniformity, and that's critical when you're engaging in this kind of procurement, when you have the kind of competition that you have between these two firms. Unfortunately, our initial review was somewhat difficult because what we found was that the numbers for the collection histories presented by the two firms for Arlington were very different. The, the numbers that were presented by Purdue were higher than the numbers that were presented by Limebarger. Purdue was showcasing Arlington as obviously it's, it's, it's prime clients, and Limebarger was using the data to show that they have done better in other districts than Purdue was doing in Arlington, and therefore they should be given the opportunity to do the same kind of work for, for Arlington. Because of that discrepancy, it became a primary topic of discussion at the orals we conducted. We brought in both firms on October 21st, and we did it by Zoom. Obviously, we did it separately, each firm having separate time. They were able to make presentations, we were able to ask questions. And our focus was in large measure on what is going on with these numbers? Why is there this discrepancy in the numbers? So we gave each firm a homework assignment, so to speak, and we asked them to report back to us explaining how they came up with the numbers that they came up with so we could understand the difference. And eventually, we were able to determine that the, what the source of the discrepancy was, and, and this was significant. We tried with the, and I'll talk about the discrepancy more in a little bit, but we tried to get it back to an apples, to apples comparison. As these two firms compete around the state, and I've had a lot of experience with both of them, as they compete around the state, and as you would expect, the, each one tries to present their data, their histories in a light most favorable to themselves, just like you or I would do. And they, in turn, tried to make the other guy's numbers not look as good as theirs, as you and I would. So our challenge, and the challenge that I've experienced before, is that you have to kind of cut through it all and come up with the most neutral, accurate picture possible to present to the taxing authority that's competing for the service. So that's what we endeavored to do. And we, in the RFP, utilized four criteria. The, the most important criteria, the one that had the greatest weight, is, is the one that is reflected in the slide that I have up now, and that is their experience. What, what has their past performance been like? So what we discovered was that Purdue had varied from the basic formula that we called for in the RFP. And, and, and I don't draw any negative conclusion as a result of that, I want, I want you to understand that. What, what they did, and I can expound on this at length if you want to question me about it after my presentation, but what they did was they included refunds in their turnover number. As you know, delinquent taxes are turned over on July 1st. And we measured, largely measured performance based on the first year collections. Now, we, we did something in addition to that, that I'll speak to here to get an even broader comparison. But you look at those first year numbers and, and you, you take your turnover, and that turnover number becomes very important in, in, in coming up with a collection rate. You take that, that turnover number and you then look at what the remaining taxes that are owed at the end of the year, in other words, by June 30th after the turnover. And with that, you come up with a collection rate. By including refunds, which we did not ask for, it was not part of our formula. By including refunds, though, it has a tendency to increase the collection rate because it increases the turnover. Now, interestingly, in 2012, when it was recompeted in Arlington, and I studied this closely in trying to figure out what was going on, in 2012, the RFP did ask for refund data, but it segregated it. It made it a separate line item, which gave you the opportunity to either include it or not include it. And the RFP had a specific caveat in it, which stated that if any of the comparators that were offered by the firms to show past performance, if any of those comparators did not have that data, because not every tax office provides that data, then that data would not be included in anyone's formula. It would not be looked at. We jumped over that. We specifically decided not to put in refunds because, number one, it couldn't, it can, to some extent artificially increase the rate, to some extent, but more importantly, we did it because not every tax office offers that information. And we want to make sure that everybody was on the, on the same page. So what we found then was that was the reason that Purdue's collection rate in Arlington was higher than the collection rate that Limebarger was relying on to say, hey, look, we can do better because we've been, we've done better in other jurisdictions. So we tried to, with, with, with that in mind, we, we tried to look at comparable histories. We gave each firm the opportunity to offer five comparators, five comparable entities. And we gave Purdue the specific opportunity to include Arlington as one of its comparators. We wanted five, including at least three school districts. The, what Purdue proposed in terms of comparables, in addition to Arlington, were four other school districts, three of it which were not, in the view of the committee, were not comparable to Arlington ISD. One of them, for example, was Highland Park. Well, it's very difficult to see Highland Park, given its, its size, its demographics, its wealth, it's very difficult to see it as comparable to Arlington ISD. Limebarger, on the other hand, offered five comparables, all, all of which, the committee concluded were indeed comparable. There were school districts and two cities, Fort Worth and the city of Arlington. There, the information that we had with respect to those entities showed that they were, for the most part, comparable to the district. So we have, we started off with, okay, we have Purdue that is offering Arlington and three entities that are not comparable to Arlington, and then we had Limebarger that was offering five comparable entities. Now, the other thing we did, which, which I alluded to a bit earlier, is that in addition to asking for first year collection history, we asked for what we referred to as all-year collection history. Why is that important? Well, when, when the turnover is presented to the delinquent tax firm on July 1st, you know, July 1st following the tax year, you're, I know, there's all of your delinquent taxes that accumulated for that tax year. That recovery, what, what is collected in the year following from July 1 to June 30 is what we refer to as low-hanging fruit. That's, that's the easiest to collect because it's new. But you've got a substantial backlog of delinquent taxes that accumulates over a period of years. So the, the next question you have to ask is, all right, what is being done to reduce that backlog that's been accumulating all these years? So we looked at not only the first year collection rate, but we looked at the all-year collection rate as well. And this is what we found. What the data showed was that four of the five comparators offered by Limebarger, all of which located in Tarrant County, had the same or better collection rate for their first year than Purdue had at Arlington, using Purdue's higher numbers. So Limebarger had a, the same or better rate the first year, using the formula that we had included in the RFP in comparison to the formula that Purdue was using, including the refunds. The other thing that we found significant was that the five comparators offered by Limebarger, which incidentally included Fort Worth ISD, the city of Fort Worth, the city of Arlington, Keller ISD, and Lewisville ISD, as I recall. Every one of those, those entities had a better all-year collection rate than Arlington. That, we felt, was significant because Arlington does have a substantial amount of aged receivables. Now, it, it needs to be pointed out that, that Arlington does have some characteristics which make it more difficult to bring down those aged receivables. But nevertheless, we couldn't ignore Limebarger's history, where over the five, last five years, in fact, in the districts that they have taken over in the general area, they have improved the aged collections. And that was something that the committee thought was, was important. That comparison is frankly, and I'm going at this a bit prematurely, but that comparison ultimately was what carried the day for us. But let me talk about the other things we looked at. We looked at the dealings with the Tarrant County Tax Office because that's who your tax collector is. Limebarger happens to represent that tax office, but Purdue's had a considerable dealings with that tax office, so they were, they were even in that regard. And the, and the references they submitted were all outstanding references. And of course, I've never been involved in a procurement where less than outstanding references were offered. But, so you, when you look at the relevant experience altogether, this criteria which had the greatest weight, we had to give the advantage to Limebarger. The next criteria that we looked at were the services to be provided, and they were very close, the firms are very close in connection with this criteria. They, they do have a somewhat different style, and, and I've certainly seen this in, in other parts of the state as, as well. Purdue's general approach to collections is more personalized, and it's more user-friendly than Limebarger's, and Limebarger probably hate me for saying that, but the, that is the way their program is presented, and that is the reputation that Purdue has. Limebarger, on the other hand, tends to be more aggressive. They file more lawsuits, they file the lawsuits more quickly, and they seem to go after the difficult accounts with more persistent attention. All of this is important when it comes to increasing all-year collections. So while AISD, as I indicated earlier, has some unique problems in dealing with its aged delinquencies, the committee considered that, that more work could be done in bringing down the amount of the aged. in bringing down the amount of the aged collections or the aged delinquencies. And certainly, Leinberger's record with those other districts that they took over for the last during the last five years was was a factor in looking at that at that as well. Other than that, the the firms were considered to be equal in performance measurement and reporting. That's that is a big deal in in this line of work. There is a constant need to report back to the district in terms of the collections. Um, and as far as additional services are concerned, both firms offered an array of services that go beyond tax collection. The it for Purdue, they have an outstanding program in relating to property value studies, appeals, and and audits. Leinberger also offers that service, but but Purdue has a particular reputation in dealing with that that type of service, a a very good reputation. But on the other hand, what we also found was that that Leinberger is more aggressive in terms of foreclosure marketing and also assisting in the disposal of struck off properties. And that's that's important. So they're pretty they're basically were equal in terms of their additional services. Perhaps give Purdue a slight advantage, excuse me, Leinberger a slight advantage in this criteria based on what they can bring to the all year collections. The next criteria that we looked at were the firm profiles. We wanted to see what the offices that would be responsible for the work brought to the table. So for Purdue, it was obviously Arlington, their Arlington office. For Leinberger, it was its Fort Worth office. Uh, and and the firms were pretty much even in in under this criteria. On the one hand, Purdue obviously showcases the fact that they have an office right here in Arlington. Uh, and that would obviously promote a certain amount of convenience for the delinquent taxpayer, um, as well as for district personnel in terms of communicating with the law firm. On the other hand, Leinberger's in Fort Worth. Uh, what is that, 15 miles away? It's not that far away. And and Leinberger also has retained local counsel, Kelly Cornet, who I saw on the list of people that was on one of your committees. And they did that, obviously, to try and balance the local presence issue with with Purdue. A factor that we looked at as well under this criteria is the the staffing in the those two offices, Arlington for Purdue, Fort Worth for Leinberger. What we found were basically same number of lawyers. But you got to remember that that delinquent tax collection work at bottom is collection work. So you have a lot of non-lawyers that you have to utilize. And so the support staff becomes important in this area. And the fact is that Leinberger had a larger has a larger support staff in its Fort Worth office than Purdue has in Arlington. Both firms have highly qualified lawyers in their respective offices. There's no question about that. But we also concluded that that Leinberger had more depth in terms of the the lawyers working in their office that would work on the Arlington account. And we were frankly impressed that all of them were present uh, on the Zoom during our the orals that we had. And you've got a substantial amount of experience that is present in Leinberger's Fort Worth office. You also have a lot of experience in Purdue's office, but there there is a little bit more depth in the Leinberger Fort Worth office. It's a it is a bit larger. That gets us to our last criteria, the money. As you probably all know, when it comes to the actual collection of delinquent taxes, the fee is set by statute. It's 15%. The taxpayer pays it, not the school district. So while this is referred to as a contingency contract and you have to go through the hoops in terms of your government code approval, in point of fact, that 15% is established by law. They they don't get it unless they collect the taxes, uh, and the district doesn't have to pay for that. As far as the other services that they have proposed to provide, under Purdue's current contract for the property value studies, appeals, and and audits, they charge a contingency fee of 7.5% for funding achieved through audit services that where you you recover more than a million dollars in state funding, they get 7.5% of everything recovered beyond that 1 million. What they're proposing here this year is that they would not charge any contingency fee during the base three year term of the contract, the new contract, and they would reduce their fee from 7.5 to 5% in any option year. Leinberger, on the other hand, has proposed to provide those services for no fee to the school district. Purdue also, under its current contract, pays the school district or reimburses the school district $175,000 a year for fees charged by the Tarrant County Tax Office. The Leinberger, in turn, has proposed to reimburse up to $225,000 for the fees charged by the Tarrant County Tax Office. Purdue has also offered to reimburse up to $15,000 for the consultant that the the school district chose to hire. Leinberger, under the under the hand, doesn't want to pay me anything. So that's what we have in terms of of fees and benefits. Which brings us to our recommendation for contract award. These are both, again, very good law firms. They're excellent law firms. They both do a good job. But looking at all the data that we received, as I've just described to you, what it really comes down to are the numbers. And on that basis, it's the committee's recommendation that you award your next contract to the Leinberger firm. It all comes down to the numbers. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Feldman, um, thank you for the work you did for this district. This is not an easy process, and it's it can become very contentious, and it's very difficult. And God bless you for this being your profession. Um, it is a difficult challenge. Not only a lawyer, a hard collection, working on that. So thank you for that. When this was discussed, it was said, we need an outside third party to truly help and do the evaluation and work with our staff to bring a recommendation back because, as you said, these are both very highly qualified firms. They both work really hard. They both are, I think, do good tax collections. So and our job as a fiduciary duty is what gives the best to the district, um, and it is a very difficult job. And so I appreciate, from reading your memos to use keeping us updated during the process, to your final memo of your recommendation, to now this thorough presentation, I appreciate the thoroughness and what I believe is the impartiality that you brought to this process, which is, I think, my colleagues' number one concern and and ask is to make sure this is a true, fair process. So I I appreciate you. Mr. Feldman, let me just ask, is there anything that would tie you to either organization that creates a conflict or anything of that nature?
I'm sorry.
Anything that creates a conflict from you doing this work?
Oh, no. In in fact, um, I should point out that when I was a city attorney of Houston, I took tremendous flak from a substantial number of council members because I had recommended that the city divide up its delinquent tax collection between the incumbent Leinberger and the insurgent Purdue. And the city of Houston was big enough that we were able to establish a champion challenger model. I paid dearly for making that recommendation. So no, there there is no conflict. I might say also, I thought about being a little corny today, uh, but then scuttled it as the board meeting got longer, but I'm gonna say it now. It's Veterans Day. I served during Vietnam. This is almost as difficult as being in a war.
That that's a big statement, Mr. Feldman. And let me just say, I don't even want to respond to it, except thank you for your service.
I'm only 21 years old.
Yeah, thank you for your service in Vietnam. I still can't fathom during those times, as I was not around during those times. So with that, I I think you've put together an outstanding presentation. I thank you for working with our staff. I don't see any colleagues with lights on for any questions. I I do know it has to be made in a very official motion. Um, as you said, a contingency contract. We are required by state law to put certain contingency contracts with a certain motion up. And so at this time, I will read a motion unless there's any other comments from my colleagues. Seeing none. I move to approve the following resolution. In an open meeting, the Board of Trustees for Arlington Independent School District considered all matters listed in section 2254 dot 1036A1 of the Government Code as they relate to contingent fee contracts with Leinberger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP. Whereas the Board of Trustees for Arlington Independent School District pursuant to section 2254 dot 1036 of the Government Code hereby finds the following to be true to the contact contract listed below. One, there is a substantial need for legal services specified in said contract. Two, these legal services cannot be adequately performed by the attorneys and supporting personnel of the Arlington Independent School District. And three, these legal services cannot reasonably be attained from attorneys in private practice under a contract providing only for the payment of hourly fees. Without regard to the outcome of this matter, because of the nature of the matter for which these services will be obtained, or because Arlington Independent School District does not have funds to pay the estimated amounts required under a contract providing only for the payment hourly fees. Therefore, it is hereby ordered that this Board of Trustees hereby approves the contract buy-in between Arlington Independent School District and Leinberger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson for professional legal services regarding the collection of delinquent property taxes, with all services to be paid in accordance with Texas law and Texas tax code. The Board of Trustees hereby authorizes superintendent to execute the above mentioned contract for the terms as stated in the contract on this day, approved and executed on this day of November 11th, 2021. I have a motion. Is there a second from colleagues? I have a motion by myself and a second by Ms. Fowler. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, all trustees voting in the affirmative, six to zero. Thank you for, Mr. Feldman, for your work, and thank you for both firms for a very thorough process. I I know it's a difficult process, so I appreciate all the work that has been done from everyone for Arlington ISD, and I truly appreciate everything. Uh, with that, we will move on to the next item. Consider action item D, consider resolution to cast votes for Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. Me? I'll throw it to you, Dr. Kavassos. I'll let you kick it off.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And tonight, we bring for your consideration a resolution to cast the votes for Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors for your consideration.
At this time, we do, part of our job is to, we have a certain number allocated votes that we are allowed to allocate to Tarrant Appraisal District Board Member. We do not have enough votes to elect someone ourselves, but we do allocate our certain portion. So at this time, I would be more than willing to ask a colleague if we have a motion. We nominate someone previously in the past, and so now is the time for the official vote. Would one of my colleagues like to make the motion? For the Tarrant Appraisal Board of Directors.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, wait, I think Mr. Chapa. Uh, who? Okay, Ms. Fowler.
I make the motion that we approve the candidate for the Tarrant Appraisal Board.
Perfect. And and Ms. Fowler, just to clarify, that's adding all of our votes to that?
Adding all of our votes to that.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Fowler and a second by Mr. Will Banks. Any further discussion? And before we get into that, Ms. Fowler, let me just say, you cast all 465 votes for the entitled election of Tarrant Appraisal Board Directors for Tony Pompah, who we nominated. Is that is that your motion?
That's my motion, that's correct.
Okay. So I have a motion to cast all 465 votes for election of Tarrant Appraisal Board of Directors for Tony Pompah. I have a motion by Ms. Fowler and a second by Mr. Will Banks, correct? Perfect. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, all trustees voting in the affirmative. Our allocation of votes has been allocated for Mr. Pompah there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pompah, for the willingness to serve on a diff- a tough board. Next, we'll go to discussion action item, COVID-19 School Operations Update. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And tonight, we bring, as we have brought for a number of board meetings, COVID-19 School Operations Update. We have a brief update. Dr. Brown will lead us through that update. So, Dr. Brown.
Thank you. I'm back with our operations update and subbing for Dr. Hill this evening. Uh, so thank you for the opportunity, um, trustees and Dr. Kavassos, to share a brief update with you all this evening. So we'll start by talking about vaccine mitigation efforts. Um, the Arlington Fire Department Vaccine Clinic continues over on South Cooper. That is Monday through Friday. Anyone can go, no appointment is necessary at that location. And we will be partnering or providing a space for Tarrant County Vaccine Clinic. Um, and this will be actually on Saturday, November 13th, from 10 to 2 PM at Dan Diaper Technical Center. Um, this will be for anyone who needs a first shot, a second shot, a booster, or any children ages five to 11, um, who will be able to get the Pfizer vaccine there at Dan Diaper Technical Center. So we're certainly appreciative of the partnership and look forward to offering that service or providing the space for that service on Saturday. Also, our county drive-through testing site, uh, offering the PCR test still at the AISD Athletic Complex on Division. That's on Tuesdays only. Um, and just to kind of share a brief update on test data through November 10th, we did administer 576 tests, and 53 of those PCR tests were positive. We will be dismantling this site on November 16th, just due to low participation. So we will be closing this PCR testing site at our AISD Athletic Complex. However, we will still have our rapid test over at AISD Testing Center on New York. That's still Monday through Friday, 9 to 2 by appointment only. And of course, that is for students and for staff members. We tested almost 1,700 tests through November 10th, and 178 of those were positive. Other mitigation efforts, of course, masks are optional in our district. We are still encouraging students and staff members, where they're comfortable, to wear a mask. We are also still continuing to require symptomatic individuals to stay home if they're having any kind of symptoms and and pleased to get tested. We'll spend a little bit of time talking about our Tarrant County COVID-19 statistics, as well as our Arlington ISD statistics. And we are, you know, even though we have substantial spread in our community right now, excuse me, we are still trending downward. So that seven day average positivity rate is down to under 6%. So lots of positive trends as relates to the spread in Tarrant County, the virus spread, less than 1,200 cases as of November 13th. That moving COVID-like illness number is three percentage points, and COVID hospitalizations, excuse me, are also down to 5% of all beds occupied by COVID patients. So as relates to our data dashboard, through Wednesday, November 10th, a close to 3,700 positive cases reported, as you can see the breakdown there. Uh, most of those are students, 3,108 students, 533 staff members. Most of those are students, 3,108 students, 533 staff members. And of course, we continue to update those cases at 5:00 p.m. each day, and that's by campus and department location as relates to COVID testing, excuse me, COVID positive cases, if you will. Those trends are really mirroring what we're seeing in Tarrant County, just seeing a downward trajectory, which is really positive. So as of November 15th, excuse me, November 5th, you can see the number of cases there for students and staff members. And again, that downward trend is what we are looking forward to seeing more of, hopefully in the coming weeks. And connected to that is virtual learning. You all know that we've been offering virtual learning here in the district since the beginning of the school year. We did start with a little under 2,000 students, our elementary students who were enrolled in virtual learning. We are in the third six weeks now, and our current enrollment is about 850 students. So pretty much every day, we have students who are going back into the classroom, physically going back into the classroom. And so we've been really looking at data, looking to determine our needs for continuing virtual learning, and we've made the decision to discontinue virtual learning at the end of the third six weeks. And so after tonight's update with you, while, we will be sharing that information to the parents of our virtual learning students, so they can make preparations to return back to the physical space beginning in January. And that is all we have for our short update. Happy to take any questions.
I'm having to get back to my screen. Ms. Brown, thank you so much. I don't see any lights from colleagues. Ms. Brown, you, oh, Mr. Chapa, please, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just had, on the testing site that we are closing down on this, I think it was the 16th, really hope this doesn't happen. I've been very hopeful at different points throughout this whole thing, and what's happened, it's happened. If there is a need, if the cases start to increase again and the need goes back up, how quickly can we get that testing site reopened? Have we thought about that?
Well, we certainly are going to continue to watch the data, and if we do see a need to restart that, we certainly can. We have a team, Dr. Hill works closely with, with the Arlington Fire Department.
Tarrant County.
With Tarrant County, excuse me, to be able to make sure we offer that. So.
Yeah, no, the only thing I would add is, you got it, Dr. Brown, as with, and this applies to other things on the presentation, but I'll stick to this one, continue to make adaptations. So as things change, if they change for the worse, then we will continue to adapt, and we will lift up and start that testing site again. We'll work with the county or other entities if we need to, because we know that testing is a way to mitigate spread in our schools, if individuals are tested when they have symptoms. So it's an important tool for us, but we know we still have our district testing site, and this one is highly, highly underutilized. And so it is appropriate to close it, but be ready to activate it if things change.
That's good, good to know. I know that's been our approach so far. I just, I was just curious if we had, had looked at anything specifically on how long it would take to reopen. Really glad to see that we're doing the Vaccine Clinic on Saturday. Great opportunity for the community. Is there anything that folks have to do to sign up for that, or is it sort of just show up and they've, they're ready to load you up?
You just have to show up and bring a parent, a guardian, et cetera, if you're underage. But it is open for the entire community, and it's open for, like Dr. Brown said, for first time, second, booster, five to 11, et cetera. It really is open in the county. It's a county effort. We partner with them by providing the location on a Saturday, but it's a county effort, and they are really wanting to make sure that they have efforts to have the vaccine accessible to individuals who want it. And so that's a big driver, and I thank them. I thank the county for their partnership, because they're bringing it to Arlington for those that want it.
That's great, and it's a good, the CTC is a great location. It's right at the geographic center of where our students live. If you look at the density of it, are we, what efforts are we making to advertise the Vaccine Clinic?
So Tarrant County is, is taking some of the lead to advertise different sites. So this is one of them for Tarrant County. But we have emailed all our parents that have signed up for email, which is most of them, and we've also messaged this to our staff to encourage them if they know or they themselves want to get vaccinated. And, and so the county is working on their communication tools, and we're direct messaging to our families.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. I know, I wanted to kind of switch gears and talk about virtual learning coming to a conclusion. I know that we have about approximately 800 students right now still learning in a virtual setting, and for that transition back in person, I know that many of these students have been virtual as well as last school year. So, you know, I realized that that transition will be quite rough for many of our students and teachers, frankly. In what ways can we support them?
And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure we had kind of some lead time to be able to notify parents and even schools to be able to start making arrangements for the students to come back into the space. And so our virtual principals and our assistant superintendents are working to determine kind of how that transition could look in terms of making sure that it's seamless as possible and being able to support those kids. So the next several weeks, we'll be able to work, to work with those team members to be able to see what we can do to make that transition smooth. I mean, it's going to be a challenge for many. I mean, it's been almost two years for some kids to be in the building. So how can we make sure we have enough space? We have the teaching units in the classrooms, all the materials ready for the kids when they come back, with a smiling face to be able to welcome them back into the classroom.
Wonderful. And I'm hoping that, you know, the camp, because not all students were rostered virtually to this, to their home campus. So I'm really hopeful as well that their in-person, you know, staff will also have adequate time and a heads-up to ease the transition on their end as well, so that they could, you know, receive the student with open arms. And for some students, this will be their first year at that campus, you know? So thank you so much. Thank you.
And I'll just add real, real quick, Dr. Brown and Ms. McMurro, that's a very good question. And we have been transitioning students every six weeks. So there's some experience, and I know our assistant superintendents have been working closely to make that as seamless as possible. But it's really been happening throughout the first semester right now. So campuses have some experience. This will be a bigger volume, but to your point, it's important to keep that in mind.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Rosos. Great questions. Ms. McMurro, let me ask, oh, no, go ahead, Ms. Fowler.
I just thought of something. Dr. Brown.
You guys just wait till I start talking, and then you and Dr. Rice, you're out to get me tonight. I don't know what's, go ahead, Ms. Fowler.
It's a plan. Dr. Brown, I'm just curious, would there be an opportunity to do some kind of a orientation for students and/or parents that are going back to these campuses? And as Ms. McMurro said, some of them for the very first time. I think maybe, you know, like, like we have at the beginning of the year, meet the teacher kind of activity, kind of ease that transition and that, that fear of the unknown. Would there be an opportunity for us to be able to do that at the schools? That's something we can certainly talk about with the, with the admin team and talk about what that could look like, especially with the larger volume, as Dr. Cavassos mentioned. We can certainly consider something like that. I think that would be very helpful for parents and the students, just to kind of at least have seen the teacher, they've seen the building, they know where their classroom is, instead of waiting till that very first day. I hope we can do something like that. Certainly, we'll definitely look into that. Thank you.
It was worth interrupting me, Ms. Fowler. That was a, that was a good question, but now I'm starting to talk, and I was waiting for Dr. Rice to his lines. No, Dr. Rice, look at that. How do I, I can reject it. Look at that, I'm rejecting it right there. Thank you for that, Ms. Fowler, and I agree. And let me ask, just following up on, on that, so knowing we have some advanced time or plan to end that, are we sending a survey out to these parents that are virtually to ask them a question? Are they coming back? What campus they're looking to come back to? Because then, you know, the hard part is we don't guarantee our teachers to go back to their home campus, and I know we're trying to accommodate that as much as possible. So, Dr. Brown, how are we gonna know which ones are possibly coming back? Because there may be some that don't from that scenario.
So we haven't talked about surveying, but we certainly know what schools the kids are zoned to, what schools they should be attending. And so the communication that will go out to parents will be with the expectation, we will see you on this date at more elementary school, and here's what you can expect. And maybe thinking about, as Trustee Fowler mentioned, some type of orientation. But the expectation is they will come. We've not talked about a survey to ask if they are going to come in person.
And I think that's fine, and I think it follows up on a little bit where, where Ms. McMurro and Ms. Fowler was going. You know, we have, think about a kindergartner, they are even a first grader now. They may not have ever seen a teacher in person somewhat. And so it's, I think, you know, not that we need to add another meet the teacher for, for teachers, but something to help, and I think explaining some of those, what we're going to do to try to help transition young men and women back into the classroom, I think does help us to make sure they're comfortable coming back to our classroom, because that is a factor. Let me ask, and either one of y'all can answer this, on, on the Arlington Fire Department Vaccine Clinic, that is not for five to 11, if that's correct?
That is, that is the clinic that they've run now for a period of time?
Right, I know they've been running that.
It's the ages five to 11, so the five to 11 is for five to 11-year-olds.
Yeah, do they do those at that clinic?
On Saturday.
So I think you're asking the.
I'm asking about the one on South Cooper Street.
It's, it's our understanding they do not.
They do not. That's what I, that's why I was asking.
The fire department themselves.
All the commission, the fire, Arlington Fire Department, which runs that clinic, does not do five to elevens, but the Tarrant County does, and that's why.
And that's what we're doing on Saturday.
And on that, you know, following on choice, and Mr. Chapa said, the requirements, you know, a parent has to be there, and I think I saw in the communication, a parent has to be there to make choice and not be in person, not just a document, and they also have to show ID, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Proof of age for the child.
And it follows, a family choice to make that decision is the proper way to do that, and providing access is the right way with that family choice. So I appreciate, just wait till I'm in the middle sign, and then jump in, Dr. Rice. Now, I, please, go right ahead, Dr. Rice.
Thank you. In all seriousness, just to further clarification, is this clinic open for boosters as well? And is this Pfizer and Moderna? Because some people in the community would want to know.
It's all of it.
It is all of it. Making sure, thanks.
It is, yes, all of, all of the above.
That's correct.
I think it's, it's the right path, and I appreciate the staff and my colleagues and where we're going, and as we transition, I mean, there's no other way to say it. So I appreciate all the work, and this has never, not been an easy subject. I appreciate my colleagues and everyone and staff working through this. It is, like anything, still very divided. But you know what? Things are divided, and tough decisions have to be made. So I appreciate the professionalism from all our colleagues in providing this to our community, which is what we have to do. So with that, I don't think there's any motion to make. I'll just keep going, and we'll, we'll move to the next thing. Next, we'll go up to consent agenda. We'll now address the consent agenda, I can't talk right now. Consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item, unless removed from the consent agenda, these items we acted on as one time in no discussion. Trustees, are there any items, any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion? Oh, wait, I've got a, I need to call him this one. We just got a motion. Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Ms. Fowler and a second by Mr. Will Banks, because I see his hand out of the corner of my eye. Correct, Mr. Will Banks?
Correct.
Okay.
You're good.
Briefle vision, learned that when I became a parent, you know, started watching my daughters. Seeing that, none, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Sorry, I wasn't looking at the board over there. I could see Mr. Will Banks, but I couldn't see that. Six, all trustees present, all trustees voting in the affirmative, motion passes. Next, we'll move to discussion item. We have two discussion items tonight. First is House Bill 3 and District Improvement Plan Progress Monitoring Update. It's one of you two, and I'll go ahead and throw it over to, I was gonna throw it to Dr. Words first, but go ahead, Dr. Rosos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And so just as a brief intro here, this is a continued discussion, as we talked about the CIPs and things like that, because this is part of the board-approved monitoring calendar. And so this is an important function that the board has, has continued to refine. And so tonight, Dr. Words will present our latest update on these data sets. Dr. Words.
Good evening, Vice President Hogg, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. I'm here this evening to share with you the progress monitoring update for the goals that were connected to House Bill 3 and our district improvement plan. I just want to remind everybody that I am sharing with you the screener results for grades K through 7, and this is the beginning-of-year screener results. So we, we administer screeners to our students in mathematics and literacy three times a year, beginning, middle, and end of year. So tonight's results are really just a baseline. This is a little bit of a delayed presentation only because it takes time to let all the grade levels get through the screening process, starts back in September. And so some of the results you're going to see today, I'm, I'm just re-bringing them forward. I shared with you primary grade results at the beginning, I think it was back in October I shared those with, with the board. I added them into this presentation tonight just for some continuity, since I was talking about the other grade levels. All right, this is not working. There we go. And that's all I have.
Still loading. It's that long, it's still loading.
Perfect. So I thought I would start off first by just articulating what the goals were that were established, both in literacy and mathematics. And our goals, as you note on the, on the, on the screen, is that they are a five-year target, and our goal is to move from 57% to 74%, reaching the approaches performance level in third-grade reading, and in math for third grade from 45 to 73. And so screener data is designed to help teachers make instructional decisions throughout the school year. I'm sharing with you where they land, but I, they are really formative in nature. They're not meant to just, to tell a teacher where the end of the road is. The way I, the way I kind of use it as a metaphor is when you're driving across the country, it basically tells you where you are in your trip, so you know whether you need to turn right or turn left, that kind of thing. So tonight, I'm going to share with you specifically around literacy and math, and as a reminder, in literacy, we have two screeners that we administer in our system. M-Class is administered in grades K through 2, and IStation is administered in grades 3 through 7. In kindergarten, we look at five areas in English, letter naming, phonemic awareness, letter sound correspondence, decoding, and word reading. In Spanish, this year, we're looking at decoding, phonemic awareness, and letter sound correspondence. And you might be asking, well, why would you only be looking at three areas in Spanish versus five areas in English? And this is because we are participating in a research and development pilot with M-Class for our Spanish learners. M-Class is one of the two adopted screeners that we are allowed to use for, by TEA. However, their Spanish version of M-Class is still being built out. And so there are eight states, 149 districts, 795 schools, and over 38,000, 34,000 students who are participating in the research and development pilot with M-Class. Arlington ISD is one of them. M-Class is a norm reference assessment, so basically what allows us to do is to understand how our students, based on their age groups, are performing with other students across the country in these Spanish foundational skills. M-Class divides their results into four categories. They're stratified from above benchmark, at benchmark, below benchmark, and well below benchmark. I highlight these for you tonight, so that when you look at the following slides, you're going to notice color codes. These color codes represent where these levels are. In essence, if you're looking for at or above, you're looking for green or blue. If you're, if they're below or well below, it's going to be yellow or red. As we go through the slides, you might see a couple of bars that look like candy stripes. The reason that candy stripe exists is because if a student is assessed a skill, and they either perform too low on that skill to really be assessed on the next skill that would come in sequence, they're accounted in the bar, but they're not actually included in terms of, they didn't take that portion of the assessment because they didn't score high enough to do so. So I'm gonna, there, most of the slides look the same, so I'm going to orient you to the first two, and then I'll slowly kind of talk about each one as we go. This is kindergarten English. As I mentioned before, we've shared this data with you before. It looked a little bit different. It was in tables. Today, I'm sharing with you in graphs, but as you can see, we look at a composite score for our students, and then each of the five areas that I mentioned earlier. Our kindergarten scores are actually doing pretty well. Most of our students are performing, we have a, most, we, we don't, most of our students are performing at least in the expected areas. But I think you would notice, for example, in letter naming, and you would expect these things for kindergarten to be at par, because they're just beginning school, and they, many of our students have been to pre-K. When you get to Spanish, the. you would expect these things for kindergarten to be at par, because they're just beginning school, and they, many of our students have been to pre-K. When you get to Spanish, the important thing about noticing with M-Class in Spanish is there are the three areas that you'll notice. They're labeled LSS, FSL, and FNL. And basically what they refer to, the first one is fluency, basically, it's basically, in Spanish, you'd say fluency in the syllable, like understanding the fluency in the sounds in syllables. And basically what we're measuring is the ability for kids to decode and understand how to do so when there are two, three, and four phonemes. In the second one, we're looking at fluid, fluency in naming the letters, or using the sounds with the letters. And so what we're basically looking here is phonemic awareness. And this assesses basically students' understanding of letter sound correspondence. And the very last one is basically rapid letter naming, which would, which is what we would call it in English. The way that M-Class measures students in the Spanish assessment is they're really ranking students at or equal to the 24th percentile of students across the country. So if you were at or equal to the 24th percentile, you'd be considered on level. In our areas, if you'll notice circled in green, in the two areas, the F, the, I don't know how to say this in English, I know what it means in Spanish, the fluency in the letter sounds, we're at 81%, are with, are at or above the, actually above the 24th percentile, and then the rapid letter naming, we're at 88%. In first grade, this is the first grade results. So I'll just let you look at them. And you'll notice that as grades change, different assessments take place, because kids are learning different skills. In Spanish, this is where we land. And then here we are in second grade. Now, you might be asking why we have one student there that's in red all the way across, and it's, this is an outlier. It's simply, we normally don't test around letter names and phonemes in second grade. This was a student who either is significantly below, and they were just captured in the data, but they're not, that's not typical for second grade. So for Spanish in second grade, we're looking at a couple of things. One, we're looking at measuring the accuracy and fluency that students understand in terms of their connection to the text. And so what students are, in the assessment, students are presented a passage of connected tests, and they're asked to read the passage out loud for one minute, and then they're scored. For another assessment, we, we measure in second grade is the automaticity with the alphabetic code, and what it basically does is it involves students reading words out of context. And so that's the second assessment that we, we give students. And then the last one is an assessment where an omission of part of the word is provided to students. And what students have to do is try to understand how to predict or use that word, even though certain syllables or portions of the word are removed. In the results, what you can see here is that 79% of our students, from 62 to 79% of our students were performing above the 24th percentile ranking. So I thought I would highlight what some of the focused practices are across the system as we work around literacy in the primary grades. Of course, we've been providing professional learning to our teachers and staff around the literacy block, the balanced literacy block, that's part of our comprehensive literacy plan, and how to leverage the screener data to make instructional decisions in the classroom. We also are encouraging teachers to focus on the priority instructional content. So what we've done is we've taken our curriculum documents, and we've highlighted what the prioritized standards are, so that we're encouraging teachers to leverage those. We've also adopted, and this is not new, but we do have an adoption as part of House Bill Three, a phonics kit. So students receive direct instruction that's every day for 30 minutes around phonics instruction, that works on word work, spelling, and phonemic awareness. We also have time and ask teachers to increase their dedicated time around that, around phonological awareness and phonics. So one's really about understanding the relationship between sounds and, and letters. And phonological awareness is really just a general concept about how sounds and words are used, and how you can manipulate those in speech. We also leverage in the classroom, of course, small group instruction is differentiated based on the, the data that comes from screeners. So kids are polled in small group instruction to address their individual needs. And then, of course, guided reading. And then last but not least, we are going, we are going to be working with campuses through a model called instructional coaching conferences, where CNI will be able to work with grade-level teachers around their planning of instruction, based on the data that they're finding on their results. And then, of course, we have instructional resources and student grouping ideas for teachers that are embedded in our documents. So in grades three through seven, we move from M-Class to IStation, and there are four areas that we measure in IStation, comprehension, vocabulary, spelling, and fluency. And these are scored in five levels. So if a student scores at above five, at level five, then they would be considered above the 80th percentile rank. So they're ranked against other students who are at their age group across the, the country. Level four would be at or below the 80th percentile rank. Level three would be at or below 60th. Level two is at or below the 40th, and of course, level one is at or below the 20th. So what you're going to see in the next couple of slides is data provided in a table, which will show you the number of students that land in each of those categories, and what percentage of the student population in that grade level that they consisted of. And then that same data is put in a pie graph that makes it just simple to look at. So, for example, here in grade three, you'll notice, for example, we had 18% scored a level three, 14% scored a level four, and 15% scored a level five. And when you look over at the pie graph, the pie chart that's on the left-hand side, that larger portion, you can see how it's broken down into those two categories. So that 53% area is made up of 31% reaching level one, and 22% reaching level two. So it just gives you a sense, in terms of the entire grade level, that a little over half are below. Or what I would say is in the lower percentile ranks, 40%, 40th percentile or lower. This breaks it down by which portion of the subject, which, which subtests the students participated in on IStation, how those actually panned out. We've labeled each of them for simplicity. On the bottom, they have CMP for comprehension, or VOC for vocabulary. We just label them across the top, so they're easy for reference. But you can see how the students are breaking down by sub, by subgroups, so for, over subtests. So for example, in third grade, 28% of the students were at level one in reading comprehension, 21% were at level two, 20% at level three, and then so on, 14 and 17. And so you can look at each of those skills across the, the board, about where the, where the most challenging areas are for each specific grade level. This is just another way of looking at the same information. The only difference between that, this information and the prior information is we've added now numbers of students. So when you see the N in parentheses, that's the number of students that, that percentage accounts for. So for example, in level one, 28% of the students in third grade scored level one in reading comprehension, and that consists of 959 students. The other point I wanted to just point out as well is what you're noticing in some of these, in the, in these tables, is the sum of all of our testing over the entire screener portion, when you look at the colored graphs, that you notice on some of the other tables with the bars, the reason why those numbers vary just slightly is because IStation captures them from the first of the month to the end of the month, and in our screener window actually carries, it straddles more than one calendar month. So the table shows you the actual accurate number in terms of the total assessment. You're not going to see very much between the difference, but if you notice that there's a difference between the bars and the tables, that's because we're trying to show you the whole, but the actual graph can only be captured by a calendar month, and we don't, we're not assessing just within the calendar month. This is grade level four. You can see it's very similar to third grade. Again, you look across the top, and across each of those skills, and you can see the percentage of students in the grade level that are performing at each of those subtests. Text fluency is consistently one of the lower ones in each of the grade levels. Grade four. This is grade five. It doesn't look terribly different from third or fourth grade. It's a little better, but not a lot. This is just the table. This is grade six, looks very similar to fifth grade. And then here are the actual subtests. And then finally, seventh grade. Seventh grade actually starts to, you can see it starts to get a little worse. 41% of the students were at level one, and 21% of the students were at level two. And you can see where the most challenging area, their area is, is reading comprehension. But when you go across the board, most, most of that half of students struggle in all four areas. So, the focus practice areas that we're focusing in around literacy are very similar to the primary grades, but they're adapted for the intermediate and junior high grades. As I mentioned at the onset of the presentation, this is BOI, so these are strategies that teachers are just engaging with, with their students. Of course, it's the literacy block and DDI, we have prioritized content. They as well are also providing individualized small group instruction and the guided reading context for students. And if they are in primary, if they're in intermediate grades, some of the biggest areas that we noticed that are pretty consistent across the board is text fluency, which, if you think about the fact that many students have been at home, text fluency, you actually become a better reader by reading. And so if students are, I'm just making an idea, but if students are at home, and they're not necessarily reading books, but spending time on a computer or on their phones, there, there may be some evidence that that might actually translate into low text fluency here in school, just lack of time. But being in the classroom, having more access to content that's at their instructional and their independent levels, the more they practice those words and their sight words, the more their fluency will increase. In seventh grade, it, the focus is really around close reading. And close reading is really about learning how to read, understand what you're reading, analyze it, and then come up with some ideas in response to that reading. So teachers are utilizing strategies in their classroom to really embed the strategy, the, the concept of close reading in their classrooms. We also are going to be providing early access to Amplify Reading Materials and Training for grades three through six. This was originally scheduled in 22, 23. We will forward, we will roll that out earlier, as we see now that we know how our students are actually performing. And then, of course, we want to continue to utilize the IStation progress monitoring that is offered as part of the screener. So one thing that's really good about IStation is it does have intervention lessons available for teachers that are directly related to what their students' needs are. So teachers, there is evidence from IStation data that shows that when a teacher identifies the students based on the data, and applies the intervention that's prescribed, when the students go back into the system, the teacher can go into the system and indicate that that student received the intervention, and then it will reassess the student. Students who receive those interventions and go back and reassess typically do better. So we are encouraging that that progress monitoring process continue to happen in the classroom, and that there are, is time dedicated to teacher, to students in the classroom to not only practice on the IStation platform, but also to receive the interventions that are prescribed for those kids. In mathematics, we, we use Math Inventory. This is our screener in grades K through six. Math Inventory really looks at several things. It provides a quantile framework, and the best way I can describe this, which I'll share on the next slide, is, well, I'll go here and come back, is it, the, they, they have a visual that I, that I'm using to help you see. It's almost like a tree. And in essence, what it is, is think of it as a continuum, and the more skills you master, the higher your quantile score is. And there are certain sets of skills that are actually assessed, and for each, to reach each level of quantiles, of a quantile score. And when you get to a certain level, quantile score, in fact, that level is, hold on one second, when you get to a 1,030 quantile score, you're considered algebra-ready. So the goal is to really work towards algebra readiness. What they utilize is something called a math taxonomy, and it measures proficiency over several math concepts that they call Q-taxons. And these skills build on each other. So as you learn skills in primary grades, and you start to acquire proficiency in those skills, your quantile score starts to go up throughout the, as you matriculate through the years. Your subtests are built around specific strands. They look at number and operations, geometry, measurement, algebra, patterns and functions, data analysis, and probability. So as I'm going to show you the data, you're going to get a sense about where kids land based on their quantile scores. And I'll share with you what's considered a proficient level by grade level, and what the average proficiency score is by the grade level here in Arlington right now. So in the math BOI for grades K through, K through two, we have four, it's stratified into four areas. We have advanced, basic, below basic, and proficient. Of course, we're looking at advanced and proficient. Those are the two areas you really want to be focused around. And you can see in our area, we have a significant challenge when it comes to mathematics. This just breaks it down by grade level into each of those four categories, so you can kind of see how our students are performing. And this gives you a better sense about where the cut points are. So in, in math, on the far right-hand side, you'll see the cut points in terms of what they would consider a proficiency cut point in this, on this screener, and where our average quantile scores are by grade level in, in our system right now. So for example, in first grade, the cut point is 117 would be considered proficient. Our average score in first grade is 120. So first grade is actually looking pretty good. It starts to decline once you get past first grade. So for example, in second grade, it's 143, the proficiency cut point there is 271. And it, it kind of proceeds down that way. The reason why you don't see eighth, ninth, and tenth in there is because we don't assess on a screener eighth, ninth, and tenth in our district, but it is available on this screener. Another way to look at that is this bar graph. The little triangle above each bar shows you where the cut point is for proficiency, and the bar that's below it shows you where our average grade level is landing. This is, this is a review. You've seen this slide before. This is what kindergarten is. On the right-hand side, you'll see the table, which basically describes how our students are performing based on the, each of the four proficiency levels, and the number of students that land in each of those categories. And then that same data is then transferred over to a pie chart, just like before, so you can kind of see what it looks like visually. This is grade one. So when you're looking at grade one, for example, you'll see that there's a, a significant portion of students that are basic or below basic. That portion is broken down on the pie chart into a bar, so you'll see 68% were below basic, and 21% were basic. This is second grade. Moving into grades three through six, you'll see a pie chart here that articulates where we are in terms of proficiency. The brown and the blue added together is really the essence of where we're at, which is about 26%. This breaks that down into grade levels. You can see the grade levels on the right-hand side, and then you can see the proficiency levels. Same concept, just looks a little different on the other side, stratified by grade levels on the right, and stratified primarily by levels on the left. Finally, I'm going to run through, I'll also show as each grade level, a pie chart that describes what's the average by grade level, like where are the scores actually falling within the pie charts. If you'll remember, at the beginning of the presentation, on the math portion, I articulated what is considered proficient for the grade level, and what the average score is. Now I'm going to show you the pie chart per grade level, which will show you where the average scores are landing, where that breakdown happened. So on the first, on the first example I gave you, we were around 140 in first, in second grade, and the average was 271 was the proficiency spot. So when we get to second grade, you'll see where that breaks down, like what's the actual number for the upper grades for three through six. So here's third grade. 90% of our students are below grade level in third grade. And this kind of shows you where the breakdown is. And to give you a proficiency quotient for third grade, the average- And to give you a proficiency quotient for third grade, the average that you're looking for is somewhere between six twenty-five and eight fifty. EM, by the way, this screener will, will actually measure you in the negative numbers. So EM, if you're wondering, what is EM? EM is any, is negative all the way up to one ninety-nine. This is grade four. And this is the breakdown for grade four. The proficiency range for fourth grade is seven hundred and fifteen to nine hundred and fifty. Here's fifth grade. The proficiency range for fifth grade is between eight twenty and a thousand twenty. So you can see that. And then here's sixth grade. So what are some of our focus practices as we start the year around mathematics? Mathematics, obviously, as you can see, is a huge challenge for us. I think it's somewhat expected simply because it's skill-based, it builds on itself, and, and so students who have been out of school for some time have to have that, those skills recaptured. We will continue to utilize Imagine Math as an individualized intervention pathway for students. So what, what Imagine Math is, is it's a program that, that uses intelligence to understand exactly where students' gaps are, and it will create a customized learning pathway for them, so that when they engage in the program, it'll actually give them practice around those specific skills that they struggle in. We also are providing some four-part series to support teachers in their application of the CRA approach to mathematics, which is concrete, representational, and abstract. In essence, what CRA approach goes is it takes from, it takes mathematics instruction from concrete, which is where you would use manipulatives to really understand math, to physically move things around, to representational, which are more a picture format. So you might see pictures of like a base ten chart or a base ten blocks, all the way to abstract, which is where you start using numbers as an abstract way to represent mathematical concepts. So the idea is as you're working down a continuum of mathematics, you take students from that place where they're actually manipulating things with their hands, to representing those things in pictures, all the way to a place where they're actually using algorithms that are use, utilizing numbers. So, uh, we will, we are, we have a four-part series that we're using with teachers to support them in their application around this concept of teaching mathematics. Also, we're, we are encouraging the increasing, uh, the increase of number talks and talk moves, which is a strategy, is part of our math, uh, comprehensive math program in the classroom. It allows kids to really start talking through their problem solving, to understand there are multiple ways to actually land on an answer. It's not always one plus one equals two. Sometimes there's mul, there are multiple pathways to an answer. So, um, number talk and talk moves are strategies that are designed to help kids dialogue and think about problem solving in a way that shows how you can actually arrive at solutions in a variety of ways. Um, also, providing professional development around data-driven instruction, so teachers understand how to leverage the data that they have in front of them now to really drive instruction mathematics in their classroom, so that their learning is personalized for students. We have a needs assessment as part of our comprehensive math plan. It basically talks about, it has all the components of the math instruction and strategies in the classroom, and allows a teacher and, it allows a school or a principal to try to assess where the gaps are in terms of professional learning that's needed, so that, that curriculum instruction is able to come behind and support them in that professional learning. And then finally, as I was mentioning earlier, provide professional development around multiple representations to connect understanding to mathematics instruction. So that's, uh, our screener data for the beginning of the year. As you can see, we have lots of work ahead of us. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I know there's a lot that want to talk, but, all right, that's a lot. Ms. Fowler, you won the lottery and you go to first.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. Uh, Dr. Wertz, I was just wondering, how did, how did the, how do the previous years compare to this year?
That's an interesting question, and it's, it's hard to answer that completely because the screeners that we're using now aren't the screeners we were using then. So it becomes a little more challenging. For example, we didn't use M-Class in primary grades before. We had iStation, now we have M-Class. So we're still trying to analyze that. It's not apples for apples. We actually had that very conversation this morning. It's not an apples-to-apples scenario. I would like to suggest that we've done better. I will tell you that word work has always been a struggle. If you looked at our iStation data for primary grades, for example, in prior years, word work, like phonemic awareness and all that, that has always been a challenge in our primary grades. But I haven't been able to really like make the bridge yet between this current BOI and what we've had in the past. I can tell you mathematics is definitely a lower.
Yeah. Well, I know even with the language, I teach at the college level, but two of my classes are INRW, Integrated Reading Writing, and it's adult basic education. They, they, they have trouble reading and telling you author's intent or what they just read. And it's, it's kind of disheartening to think that they're in college and they can't pass the reading or the writing test, you know? And, um, anyway, that's just, yeah, it's, it's all the way up to the college level that, that they're still struggling with the reading and the writing. But, but math, that, those scores are really low. And I hope that maybe we are able to, with maybe some of the ESSR funds, we can bring in some, some tutors and some people to really focus, because we can't just keep, we can't keep passing the kids up.
Right.
You got to keep them till they can learn and build on that foundation. You know, letting them go on and move to the next grade, it's going to catch up with them.
That's right.
And we've got to find a way to, to pull them back in some really focused instruction and make sure that they've got the foundation before we move them on. So I hope maybe with some of the ESSR funds, we can get some tutors in there to work with.
So our, to answer that question, we have done an RFP and hired, there are six tutoring agencies that we are working with. We're actually working with principals right now. They're selecting which agency they want to work with. And, and then we will be deploying those additional tutors out to their campuses to help. We, we do intend to actually grow that program because the need is a lot higher than, you know, we didn't know exactly at the beginning. And when it comes to specifically around these tutors, we were thinking about House Bill forty-five, forty-five, and the criteria for kids that have needs in House Bill forty-five, forty-five do not include the needs that are all just showing up based on a screener. It really was about whether you pass a STAR or not, right? So, um, we know that that need is a much greater. Right now, we are close to having the analysis, we'll have an analysis pretty closely done that will tell us what the gap is between the number of staff that are needed, even for House Bill forty-five, forty-five, and the number of students. Right now, we know exactly how many students in each grade level at every school qualify for that. We're now working with principals to identify if there's a gap between their staff, so that we can try to staff it. But as we've mentioned before, staffing is an issue.
Right.
It's hard to find. We have, we have many, many positions that we posted for ESSR to address this problem that have yet to be filled, simply because it's a hard, it's, it's hard to staff right now.
Well, and I think the problems have been there for a long, long time, but now they're just exacerbated by, by COVID and kids being out of school for a while and trying to learn virtually. But, um, but yeah, we've got to do something and we got to do it fast. We got to get them caught up.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. Dr. Wertz, I, I want to go back to the, the slide that says average MI performance by grade fall 2021. The purple bar graph.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
There. So, what, you know, what, what this looks like to me, and, and maybe you have an explanation for it, is it seems like there, you can see the effect of the younger students being out of school. Is this, because it's, it's kind of flat going across, and then, you know, the, the kids who had a school experience before COVID, it looks like they have been progressing at a pretty linear rate in line with the quantile proficiency minimum. So, is, is that a possible explanation for that flatness there at the beginning? Is that those students just haven't been in school and having the experience they normally would?
Right. Well, that, and also keep in mind that when, in those younger grades, the skills that are actually being assessed are not as complex in terms of quantiles that you would expect as they matriculate through upper grades. So the, the older kids get, the more that gap starts to show up, um, if they're not in school. So for example, kindergarten, you'll notice that that benchmark is at zero because there's no expectation or requirement that you went to pre-K. So we expect you to show up at the beginning of the year in kindergarten, may, possibly with no skills at all. Anything you have above that point is actually good. So you're going to see in kindergarten, we look like we're outperforming just because kids were probably in pre-K the year before. Same thing with kindergarten to first grade. If students, if students receive instruction in kindergarten and move to first grade, that number is going to be, that, that proficiency score is only going to reflect the few skills that are actually acquired during the kindergarten year because it's beginning of the year first grade. So, to answer your question, you're going to notice at the beginning that it's going to feel like we're, you're hitting targets. But once you start going from like, for example, from first to second grade, those students who are not in school, the number of skills that they should have acquired in that first grade year is going to hit that target for two seventy-one in second grade, and they're not going to, they're not going to make it had they not, if they didn't master those, those concepts. So, that's really why you see the flat line at the very beginning, and then it starts to become a lot more, the, there's, the gaps start to grow a lot wider as you, as you move through the grade level.
So does that, does that mean you would expect to see a trend like this even in a non-COVID environment?
Yeah, I would, I would expect that, for example, if you have students that attend a pre-K who show up in kindergarten, I would expect kindergarten to look very similar, and I would expect kindergarten to first grade to start to look similar too. Ideally, in a school year where you have students who have, are attending school, you would start to see, um, their proficiency rates just go up. You would, ideally, you would start to see their bars touching that purple triangle more routinely. You wouldn't expect to see that gap. The only reason you're seeing like the flat line there, frankly, is because our kindergarten students are outperforming the zero-point mark. Whereas in first grade, they're coming in right about where we would expect them in year one. But it's not because there's actually an increase. Do you see what I'm saying?
Right.
Yeah.
So then is another takeaway from this that we are, that we have it, we are having difficulty getting our first graders between first and second, and second and third, to get them where they need to be?
I wouldn't necessarily say that's, um, I don't know that I would say that in a typical scenario that that's the case. It will be interesting to see what this data looks like next year when kids are in school all year. I think this is reflective of the fact that we've had a very volatile learning experience over the last year and a half, where gaps were actually generated, and those, that, that, those gaps are actually showing up in the, in a screener. Because remember last year, which kind of goes to the question earlier, like, can you compare to prior years? It's difficult because in, during COVID, it's very difficult to do screeners. Even when we tried to administer them electronically at home, moms and dads would want to help their students, and so you have these inflated scores. So it, the data was, is so dirty that it's really hard to, to tell from one year to the next what, 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 what the reality is. I don't suspect that when school is in session all year long and kids are going to school all year long, that you would see gaps. You would still see a trend like this, like you're going to notice that even as the gap exists, the bars still go up, and that's simply because kids get more, they acquire more skills. Ideally, you want the gap, the, the white space to be less between each of those two spots.
Right. Okay. Okay. This, this chart, just, when I was looking at it, it made me think, because some of the jumps that are made from year to year for three, four, five, six, seven are numerically not far off from the quintile proficiency minimum jumps on the, you know, the blue triangles. And so if we had been on a bright trajectory earlier, then we, those later grades might be there. That, that was maybe, that was something that came to my mind.
Right. Ideally, if they, you, the point is, is I think I'm hearing you say is, the gap that exists between the bars, had they been in school and were actually on grade level, you would still see those jumps, but the jumps would happen from triangle to triangle.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Okay. Is there, is it possible for this data to be compared to similar school districts that use the same?
We don't have access to any of the other districts' data.
Interesting.
It's not, that's the interesting thing about screener data. It is contained within the school system. There is no access to screener data outside of the district unless we were to like reach out to them to see if they could provide us with the average results from the districts that they work with. We haven't requested that. I'm not sure they could provide it.
Okay. Would it be helpful to have that or no?
It would only be helpful to know in terms of like how we perform comparatively to other places. Kind of similar to the way we would look at STAR, you know, with STAR, we, we, when we look at our STAR data, we compare ourselves to other districts that have similar demographics.
Yeah.
So it'd be interesting to see whether our students perform similar, they've had the same challenges. But I really do not believe we, we can get access to it. Even the only reason we have access to even the STAR data is because the, the T, the Text Education Agency creates a data file that they put in the system for everyone to have access to across the state, but there is no file around this. And partly it's because not every district utilizes the same screeners.
Sure, sure. But I mean, it would, it, you know, in theory, if it, if we had it, right, it would
Oh, yeah.
Sort of give us a sense of, this has been a disruptive experience for everybody else. Where do we fall on that spectrum?
That's right.
You know, were we disproportionately affected for some reason? The last question I had, which is maybe, sort of spans the, 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 the reading and the math, is the inventories for all grades, essentially from kindergarten on, when you break it down by, you know, advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic, those slices of the pie don't seem to change much at all from K all the way through seven. What, what's an explanation for that? It seems like they're kind of, I mean, y'all know a lot more about this than I do with the data. It seems like we have kids that get to kindergarten and first grade, and then they're, it almost seems like they're sort of set on this trajectory where they're essentially basic, below basic, proficient, or advanced, all the way through. What's a, what's an explanation for that?
I, I think for me, the, it, this is a representation of what happens with COVID. It's the, it's kind of back to the question of the comment that you made around these bar graphs. When there's a specific cut point for each grade level, and the idea was that you, if you were in third grade, that you had acquired certain skill sets to reach the cut point for the beginning of your fourth grade, and that didn't occur, that same gap is going to be consistent across the whole grade level band, all the grade level bands. You're not going to see that change. Ideally, in a real year, this data would be less uniform, and you'd find yourself in scenarios where grade levels would pop out at you. We, we saw that before, like we would see, like in primary grades, we'd say, well, second grade is an issue. If I don't, if we don't have a prob, if we don't fix this phonemic awareness issue, it's, we're never going to fix third grade. But right now, because the, there is such a uniform experience in terms of COVID, and lots of kids are out of school, you're seeing that gap just show up across the board. And it's kind of similar to what Dr. Lopez shared in the, in the onset of our discussion, I think in August or September, is there is no one grade level that stood out even in STAR. It just was uniformly, um, a challenge everywhere. And I think that this is just, it's just, that, that summit of assessment is just being now revealed again now in screeners. It's just a different assessment telling us the same thing.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm hitting the wrong buttons. Hold on. Ms. McMurro. Sometimes my fingers are too big for that. Every time I though I've, I've rejected Mr. Chapa and Mr. Raish, and they still come on, so I don't know what he's doing, so.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. I, I really appreciate what you said about fluency. Because even though, as we saw in the data, this is the lowest performing area on a lot of these reading assessments across multiple grade levels, it's the simplest to address. Read.
Read.
Read, read, read. Read independently, read to a friend. And we've got, you know, high-interest books, and students are checking out books from the library. And as a mom, I don't always know exactly what my second grader is working on in his classroom. I don't know his vocabulary words every week, but I can certainly make time each night to read with my child and prioritize that. And just because we have older children, you know, progressing through the upper grades, you're never, you're never too old to read with your family members. So, um, I think that's kind of the silver lining. you're never, you're never too old to read with your family members. So I think that's kind of a silver lining. So I appreciated that. I had one question. Can you go back to this slide? Grades K through two focus practices?
For which subject?
Literacy. Or three through seven, that one might be easier. Okay. I noticed that second to last bullet point, there will be instructional coach, coaching conferences provided by the CNI department. We also have our Engage to Learn coaching sessions, in-house instructional coaches, design days for active learning cycle. We've heard from Financial Futures Committee, from teachers themselves, just how important preserving that time is. So can you please elaborate on how this is going to come into play? Cause we need to make sure we're nesting our teachers' time.
Right, this is not designed to be coaching, meaning where they're actually gonna get additional coaching. Their E2L coaching, that student, that teachers, that literacy teachers receive, there's, they have five coaching touchpoints over the course of the whole year. Any other coaching that they receive is directly coming from their supervisor, their on-campus coach, however that may be. But the E2L coaches is five times. This is more designed to work with teachers in terms of, they have conferences, like they have, you know, like, I don't know if you remember back in the day, we used to have like second grade conference and the third grade conference in terms of the way we communicate. Well, we wanna be able to provide coaching conferences to teachers, meaning help them in their, in their design of instruction as they respond to the data, but it's not mandatory. This is, this is an optional opportunity for teachers to receive support in their instructional design based on their data that we wanna make available to them. Our focus for the primary grades really is about, or the intermediate grades is text fluency. How can you, what are some strategies and things you can do to build text fluency for your kids? You know, being a teacher, that what you would do in an intermediate grade is very different than what you would do in primary grades, meaning like there are sight words and things like that that you really learn in primary grades. Whereas in upper grades, it's much more about vocabulary development. And then in, in junior high, close reading. So it's not a, it's not gonna be like a mandatory time where we pull teachers from their planning time. It's an optional support that we'll provide to them.
That's wonderful to hear because just like our students need various levels of support, I feel like the teachers, you can say the same for them. Thanks so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And wow. Going back, just to kind of set the stage, make sure I remember correctly from before. We moved screeners from last year and then, you know, there's a certain set that's approved by the state. I thought ICE, ICE Station was going away. I know we moved the math.
ICE Station will go away completely next year.
Okay, so.
To ICE Station for the upper grades, but right now.
So, and this is gonna be problematic because, you know, for someone like us as a governing body, the important thing is to lo- look at the longitudinal data over time to see a measure of growth. And, you know, I know it was well-intentioned from the state, but.
Well, the positive thing about it too, well, it's, it will be positive in a few years, which is
Right.
downside that I think you're articulating. But we did have a system in place in primary grades, even with ICE Station, where we could take a score from kindergarten and predict what their outcome in third grade would be on STAR so that we could adjust for that. Dr. Lopez's department's gonna start re-equating those as we move along the continuum of each year using the new system that we have. But when you change a screener, you start over.
Yeah.
That's pretty much where we're at.
Yeah, we're, at a time we need that data the most, we're starting over, so.
Right.
Which is a downs- downside, so. Now with these screeners and, you know, looking at the ICE, ICE Station and we, let's say our level, which is not as bad as math, but still bad. I mean, from looking at this data, help me understand, looking at the beginning of the year data, where we are, what's typical? And then what that level of growth that we see in that student from beginning of the year? What, what level of growth can we predict that an average year student will make from beginning of the year? And how much more of a hurdle will we have in terms of trying to get that, steepen that curve?
Right. I would have to go back and look and see where the cut points are. The cut points are, are set based on beginning, middle and end of year, what they're, what they should be landing at each of those points. So I'd have to go back and pull those numbers. I don't have them on me. I will say the numbers, the, the situation that we're looking at now is not what we would typically see. The gaps are, are much stronger than we've seen in other years. But to answer your questions in terms of like, where would we expect them to be at the middle of year versus beginning of year? I, I have to go pull the cut points because those are already predetermined.
Okay. Yeah. I'm just trying to gauge.
I understand, yeah.
You know, where we are now, where we typically are and how much that curve has to steepen from.
Right. I understand.
All of our checkpoints. That would be really helpful if we could do anything around predicting that. Now, going back, I was gonna ask on the slide, on the math, on the average MI performance by grade, that, that graph that shows the cut points per grade and where we actually fell with the bart-
Okay.
Bars. Or actually, or the one before that even, that one.
This one?
The one bo- before. So the cuts scores, those, those, this is nationally normed reference, right? So those cut scores are across the nation. And they don't change from year to year, right? They stay, they're stable.
They're, they're based upon, I can't tell you whether they, do they ever, where are-
They're on map, the scaling change from twenty nineteen to twenty-
That's right. They changed between last year, two thousand nineteen to even now. It, they, they actually adjusted the scores.
Okay.
But I can't tell you.
So what I'm-
Yeah, we don't know.
So given that all students across the country and across the world really are down considerably, those cut scores don't refle- reflect
The idea is-
Where the average student on a bell curve is performing post-COVID versus pre-COVID.
The idea with these cut scores is not to measure how, how, it's basically not trying to give you a distribution like you would if you were grading on a curve, so to speak. The idea is supposed to, is really supposed to be what is the cut point? The scale score that would tell you where, which, where the proficiency levels are. So if you think about it, even like STAR, those cut scores, those cut points for scale scores adjust from year to year based on the people taking the assessment. But it's still based on the questions being asked, the items that kids are actually participating in, where they're landing and what actually would be considered proficient versus not proficient. So when you're looking at these cut points, you're not looking at basically a distribution of trying to see across the country who has an A, B or C, so to speak. It's really more about at this grade level, this is where proficiency is considered and this is where you land.
Right. And then I tweak a little, but it's basically the same.
Yeah, usually the tweaking of a scaled score is based on the items, item difficulty, things like that.
So my next question, building on that, is I know a number of vendors, you know, I've seen press releases and articles where based on their screener da- da- the, their, that vendor screener data, they've put out and said, okay, we're seeing this percentage drop in math, third grade math across, you know, a various state or across the United States. And so couldn't we use that kind of, and I'm sure that data is, is available from the vendors and we could say, in that, on average, we're seeing, you know, this many people score whatever the category, the bottom category more because of COVID. And then we can compare ourselves to our numbers to see if we've dropped more than that or about the same as, as.
We don't have access to that data. It's part of the reason why we're a little dissatisfied with this screener specifically is because the level of data we would wanna have at the district level to understand how kids are performing across the whole system, where we are in comparison, is just not available. We've made requests.
You know, if you've got like three or four other vendors who've put out press releases or stories, you know, saying, we're seeing, we've seen this decline in our beginning of years assessments across the board
Right.
in the United States or even within the state of Texas, if that exists. Even if it's not M-class.
Right.
But you see clustering statistically that people are measuring about a twenty-four percent decline in scores off of proficient or whatever measure. We could use that data to kind of help, give us a, a good estimate of where our kids are in our, these beginning year assessments versus kids across the country. Correct?
I don't think we could do that. And the reason being is because if they're, you, if you're measuring students and you're comparing them against each other, they have to be compared using the same instrument. If, if you have MAP, for example, and MAP is giving, making that statement like you're suggesting, I can't necess-
They do.
Right. I can't necessarily transfer that and say, well, if they say twenty-four percent of their average, that must mean twenty-four percent of ours are obviously doing the same thing. I just don't know the answer to that question. I think it's, it would be very difficult just to make that generalization when there are completely different assessments and they may be measuring different skill sets at different points in time. I would have to, we would have to dig in to find out exactly what they're measuring, what we're measuring.
All of the different tests should be coming in at about the same percentage drop in terms of how are they're measuring that COVID slide.
I mean, we could take their word for it. I just wouldn't be able to verify it.
No, but that would give us some, some sort of stake in the ground and to get, gauge, you know, or have not a definitive answer to, but at least a confidence around, hey, we are, these numbers are bad, but they're bad across the state by about the same amount.
Well, what I could, I, I, what I, we, we could say is what's being reported is that across the state, the average in whatever assessment is, multiple assessments is about twenty, I'm making up a number, twenty-five percent decrease. But we wouldn't be able to necessarily relate that to ourselves. We would just have to kind of make our assumption that we might fall into that category. It's the same, it's the same thing when we do our percentile ranking when it comes to STAR. You wanna believe that you're within a range that looks like the other groups like you. But we even know in our own scoring and percentile ranking that that's not necessarily the case. Because when the cohort moves and you don't, that gap starts to exist. So you wanna assume that the context, everyone has different contexts. You wanna assume that other, if everyone across the state or everyone across the country is doing it one way, that you are about the same. But we know there are outliers and we, I couldn't predict for sure whether we were, we were one or not. We could, we could say what you're suggesting, which is reporting is showing that the average across the country looks like this. And we also know in our, in our gaps, this is the number of students we know that are below grade level. And try to make an assumption around that. But I wouldn't be able to make a direct relationship is, is what I'm trying to say, but.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's, you know, clear the numbers are bad.
Right.
And bad relative to what? And at some point, we just have to accept them and know that we got some heavy lifting to do. And that's clear that we're gonna need all hands on deck and support from the community at large to parents, teachers, community leaders, people who are willing to come in and we're gonna need bodies in, in the classrooms helping the teachers out. And we've got a lot of heavy lifting to do.
Right.
So.
Okay. Dr. Raish.
Thank you, VP Hogg. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. So I'll be, I'll be pretty brief. There's, there, there's been some things that we, we've heard from, pretty repeatedly from teachers and Ms. McMurro talked about and touched on the, the time for teachers. And I, I think that's great. You covered that. And I also really appreciate the just read. If we can pour everything we can into those like pre-K three, I've said that since before I got on this board. And it's been my thing. The more that we can put into them at those young ages on not just the academics, but conflict resolution, everything else that matriculates all the way up and gets rid of a lot of upstream problems that, that we're currently facing. So related to that, another thing that we've heard is the, which I think you've described in this presentation is intensive tutoring, essentially meaning the kids where they are, which is what we've heard. I heard it tonight from one of our teachers. So I, I think that's great. I'm curious as to what the, what the communication plan is or has been with the teachers in, in the district. Because when I heard that, I'm like, okay, they're, they're doing it. They're, they're assessing, they're, it's coming, it's rolling out. But yet we have teachers reaching out to us saying, this would be a great thing if, if we could do this, if we had this. The intensive tutoring and meeting the kids where they are. And so at, at what point do, do our, our warriors on the front line get this information that we're getting here tonight? That, yeah, they're, we're, we're on it. We're, we're doing it. It's coming.
I mean, we've shared this with campuses and campus principals. We've, we've articulated all of it to them. We've met with principals now. We're doing it actually individually, one, one at a time so they can actually select their vendor. I think it would, it's, it's a misnomer to give everyone the belief that there's gonna be an army that's gonna come in and kind of save the day, so to speak. Like do all this tutoring, cause the reality is, is that we have to find people still. The good thing is that when you hire a vendor through an RFP, they're responsible for finding staff.
Absolutely.
And so they'll staff it up and we'll, we will make sure that the funding is there and available for them. But right now, what we're finalizing is, and this is important to keep in mind too, and I'll just use House Bill forty-five forty-five as an example. Teachers had until the end of October or campuses had until the twenty-ninth of October to finish their accelerated learning plan, which is where you identify who's the student and what the actual plan of action is. Once, once all those plans are input, we now have the data that tells us specifically by grade level, how many students in each school need at least House Bill forty-five forty-five. Now that we know the volume and we have our vendors, cause we just finished the RFP, now we start matching it. So once the actual selection of their vendor happens, then that will be articulated to the campus and they'll actually know who they're getting and how many people are gonna be there and all of that. But the principals are just making that selection now. I would suspect that principals have all that information. We, I'm happy to go back and make sure that there's something that we can share so the teachers have a better understanding if that's, if that gap i- is there. I can work with the Office of School Leadership to make sure that we're communicating on our part that way. But it's probably not gonna start seeing like people showing up probably until if, I think it's probably gonna be like end of November, December is when
Sure.
when, when the vendors will start showing up, yeah.
Understand. Yeah, I, I think we've, we've made such an investment in, in, in leadership and building capacity for those that want to move into administration. We've done that with teachers now to a- advance for lead teachers, et cetera. So I know we've been deficient in those areas in the past and you guys are doing a great job in, in growing those programs. And so it would seem just really to make that same, along those same lines, that same investment in letting them know that this is also.
Oh yeah, for sure. Yeah.
So, okay. The other thing about all of this data, do you disaggregate this or have it disaggregated based on race, ethnicity, socioeconomic?
That's a good question. So we actually were talking about that today too.
Because I think that can be really telling on
Right.
where, where we need to meet certain groups of students.
Right.
And I know this is new as far as our tools, but I bet there's a lot of information there so that we can really meet the needs of each student.
So that's a really good question. Campuses all have their data based on all the individual students. So they can actually see their students. We're in the process of, we'll have to do it manually. They're, we'll have to code, create a report
Okay.
that will allow us to see whether we're reaching goal attainment for our student groups based on the goals that were set. So for example, if there's like a second grade reading goal around the screeners for the end of the year, our goal is to be able to track by subgroup, how we're inching towards that outcome over the course of the school year between beginning, middle and end of year. That's an internal report that we'll have to generate on our own. And actually, we met today and talked about that. It'll have to be hand-created. It'll have to be hand-created, but yes, that's on the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that's, that's great to hear, because in, in all of our talk, always that we truly believe in with, uh, access to opportunity, et cetera, there's, I think, a big piece of that equation that needs to be plugged in there.
Well, and I think there are certain student groups that, um, have more obstacles that we need to pay attention to.
Yep.
And most students fall in more than one category, uh, but we know there are some categories that typically, um, need additional support, special ed, ELS.
Sure.
Students who are economically disadvantaged, so that will allow us to make sure that we're seeing those groups move, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great. Uh, thank you, I appreciate you, that's all I have.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Rush, uh, Dr. Wertz, thank you, and I, some of my colleagues said it, right? I think it's, how do we make sure we're, we always talk about, how do we make sure we're progressing? Right, like, that's the goal, like, how are we progressing, how are we getting back to levels? So, um, you know, however which way we can track, whether it's other districts that are using the same screener, and we do a joint effort of combining those, or, you know, and the concern I'd have, and Mr. Wilbanks is going with it, like, changing screeners constantly. And also, I don't want to stay with a screener that's not doing what it needs to do, and sometimes that can occur on that. And then the last thing I, I think is, how are we making sure parents know how their kids are doing on the screeners? Listen, I, I've talked about these screeners a lot. I know more than ninety-eight, okay, seventy percent, no, ninety-five percent of most parents, and I hear these screeners from my students' teachers, and, and it's like, okay, you know, and, and teachers historically paint a glossy, a good picture of where they're going, but I also know my second grader's behind, right? I, I know where she is behind, a- and, and so it's like, okay, I know a lot of these screeners, I know what's happening on these screeners, and I know what we're doing on these screeners. So, you know, and then we hear from other teachers that some of their kindergartners have a hard time administering some of the screeners. And so, I just got to make sure we stay consistent, we're communicating with parents about what we're doing to truly help, and painting a, a realistic picture if your young learner is behind. Because, you know, I have the pleasure of having a teacher as a wife, and so, she, I sit there and she tells me what to do, and we, we know how to go about those things, but, uh, you know, is, we have to have that communication plan of these screamers, what? No, she tells me all the time. But just staying consistent, stay consistent on the screeners and how we communicate them out, like, you know, like, it's not on the report card, and I'm not saying it should be on the report card, but it's, it's more of an informal versus a formal. Here's what we're seeing, here's how we progress on this, here's where we expect it. And I know they'll come back and, and we'll say, here's the screener now in this semester, and here's how they've progressed and what they've done on these. But I just want to make sure, the earlier parents know, and the more realistic picture parents know, the better it is. Even though it's a hard conversation, um, the better it is, is, I think Ms. McMurro said, read, read to your kids, you know, like, listen, we, we do it all the time, and it's, it's hard somewhere in that, so, I appreciate it, I, I think it's good. We got to address it, and as Mr. Wilbanks, someone said, you know, even if it's not always glossy and pretty.
Right.
This is what we do.
Right.
We're working on, how do we get better? So, no matter what the data is, don't ever be afraid to present to us. We have to have realistic data, and we have to make sure we're progressing, that is the goal. Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Wertz. I was waiting for when I started talking, someone to cut me off and click in, so, I'm not looking at you two. Uh, next on our agenda is a discussion item, and it's TRS healthcare update. It is eleven thirty-seven. We have the option to, you don't know what I'm going to say, you don't know what my option's going to be. My option may say, let's spend three hours and talk through this. Or the option, I can, this is, you know, this is an item I'll talk about for a long time. I do think in the interest of time, um, Dr. Kavasos and I conversed, and he agreed. We don't have to make a decision, and, and looking at what the recommendation's probably going to be in decision, I do think we could hold this off until next meeting, if, if I see my colleagues acknowledging. I see a head nod, is that a sleep or a head nod? I think, I think we can hold it off, I, I don't want to sell it short, um, on that for the interest of time, and we do have a couple of speakers that are for non-agenda items. So, unless there's any objections, I will, um, ask us to hold this off for the next meeting, thank you. And Mr. Kale, sorry, I know you wore your pretty suit tonight to be able to, to present, so, you'll have to get a haircut for the next one and come in with a clean shave, so. Now, we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, uh, we, do we have any requesters registered to address the board tonight?
Yes, sir, we have three requesters for this portion of the meeting.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Benjamin. To all, this is the second open forum of segment, provides citizens with opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply. Dirigatory comments aimed at individuals will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Ms. Benjamin will notify you in the politest way possible when your time is up to please end your presentation. Um, our first speaker, and I think they're in person, is, uh, Ms. Jennifer Davis. There she is. Hi, Jennifer, thank you for holding true and staying with us throughout the night. I swear, we don't always go this late, and so, I apologize for going this late, but thank you for being here and staying with us. Uh, Ms. Davis, please go right ahead, your time starts now.
Okay, um, basically, um, I'm here to express some concerns with the administrative bullying that my son and I have endured. My son attends Arlington High School and has been targeted. I want to first express that I'm raising a teenager, and it's not easy. Uh, I do not condone bad behavior, and I'm not making excuses. What I do condone is raising my son to learn from his mistakes, but not being, but not making him wear a scarlet letter. During the course of the year, I have been hung up on by administration, belittled, and made, and they made me feel unwanted in my son. My son has been targeted and mistreated. As a parent, I sent my children to school and church, once where it took, you know, peace and safety in it, but we don't feel that right now. Let me see here, sorry. Arlington High School has deprived me of the safety that I once felt from the school. I'm seeking your help to repair the relationship and the pride I once experienced as my, uh, sorry. As a parent of Arlington, excuse me, I brought this down. It is my understanding that educators do not become educators just to take, take on the easy kids. I want you to know that I send the best to school. I do keep the good kids at home. I want my son to have the opportunity to finish high school and succeed, but I feel that that may never happen because of the way the school has treated my son. I have expressed my concerns to the campus administration, and I have been dismissed, rejected, and made to feel small. I do not feel like I have been heard or been, nothing has been resolved on, on the ongoing harassment. Please help me and my son. I'm seeking your partnership to ensure my son's ability, ability to learn in an environment in an inclusive support of free, of, in, free of harassment.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Davis, and we can't respond, but I would, I know you've met with Ms. McDonald, we would ask you to please meet with her again, and would you please send us an overview as well as her contact information, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you, thank you for staying this late. Uh, next up is, uh, Mr. Stephen Poole. Mr. Poole, thank you, you're used to board meetings going late, um, so, but thank you for staying, uh, in this late hour.
Good morning, members of the board, and Mr. Hogg and Dr. Kavasos. I, I am Stephen Poole with UEA, and tonight I'm bringing to you, uh, our salary comparison of teacher salaries we do. This is the twenty-eighth year we have done this, and I'm pleased to report, uh, my numbers and charts are much more cheerful than Stephen's. You can see the, the ranking of Arlington has ra- has risen dramatically, and, uh, for the first time in a very, very long time, Arlington is in the top five of every category in North Texas when we compare teacher salaries, and North Texas is one of the highest-paying, uh, areas in, in the entire state. So, this is a big accomplishment. But it's not an easy accomplishment either, because the voters supported the tax ratification election last year in your commitment to teachers. We see these rankings, and what a difference three years makes. Because three years ago, in the fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, uh, areas, you were in the mid to upper teens, and I'm glad to report to you that now you're number one in North Texas in those categories. And like I said, what a difference three years makes. But, uh, just like tending a garden, we constantly have to continue monitoring not only our teacher salaries, but all employees' salaries. Because as we're finding right now, we're not only in competition with surrounding school districts, we're in competition with private sector. And when you can walk into a Starbucks and make fifteen, twenty dollars an hour with full benefits paid from day one, that's where a lot of our support employees or auxiliary employees are looking. So, we're going to have to constantly check in with those, I know you've made adjustments for some, uh, other categories employees this year, and that's fantastic, too. But this is news to celebrate, this is news to keep our high-quality teachers in the district, and it's news to, to attract high-quality employees into, uh, our district, too. So, good job, and I'm, I'm pleased to report these numbers, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Thank you for the news this late in the evening. Uh, next, I think they're virtually, and so I'd look at Frank to see if they're on. Supposed to be, uh, Armin, Arminita Guerra, and I'm looking and saying. Oh, she is here. Not virtually, per- perfect. Ms. Guerra, good, good evening, thank you, I've seen you back there, we've seen you here before multiple times, so, uh, thank you for joining us this late night, and your two minutes will start now.
Okay, uh, so, I usually, uh, go to, whenever I have the chance to see my son at lunch, I, I, I go, uh, when I'm not working. And when I'm with him, I usually ask him questions about if there's anything weird going on, anything about your emotions being asked, is there anything about your, you know, your friendships with certain friends or the opposite sex, you know, are you, that, you know, should you want to be a girl, it's okay, vice versa? I ask him, I ask him these type of questions. And, uh, you know, for the most, usually he tells me everything's okay. Um, every now and then, he'll tell me something's going on, and I, I, I immediately address it with, uh, his teacher, uh, it gets rectified. Uh, there's times where I've had to go directly to the principal or, or vice principal and let them know, uh, of a concern that I have, and, and usually it gets rectified as well. I want to go back to saying, um, you know, if I'm all over the place, excuse me, I don't have a script I'm reading from or anything, but, as it stands right now, you know, we still have a choice of whether to wear a mask or not for the children, and I'm glad that y'all still have it to wear, you know, it's our option. And the other thing now coming up, uh, again, is the, the, the shot situation. Because I know, I don't plan to have my son get one, I mean, I personally have a lawsuit right now against a flu shot that was given to me. So, anyway, that's where I stand on that, and I hope to continue that, because I know that right now the White House administration in DC is pushing that a certain date, you know, that private companies and businesses are supposed to have this. And I just, I really just ask that the school board please push back against, uh, our federal system, and, and consider the, our, our, consider our community, and where our, the parents here in this community stand. I believe that Arlington, we are a conservative type of, of place to live in, and that, anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Guerra, a- and once again, thank you for staying this night, and sorry, I did say you were virtually, so I'm glad, I'm glad I called your name out for you to do that, so I appreciate that. That is the end of our, uh, speakers for the evening. Next, we will move into superintendent's report, Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, and in the interest of time, we will not have a report.
Well, thank you, Dr. Kavasos, that was a nice report. Uh, Ms., yeah, it, sorry, at this time, are there any school board reports? Real quick, famous last words, go ahead, Mr. Wilbanks, real quickly, go right ahead, I look forward to it.
As you guys all know, today is Veterans Day, and I want to thank the Rotary Club of Arlington and our city officials for putting on a great program out at Veterans Park today. It was perf- they dialed up perfect weather, I don't know how they did it, but they did, it was a wonderful service.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks, that's always welcome news. Don't see any more, uh, lights. Ms. May's always likes to end it with a quote, so I figured I'd follow suit with that, and, uh, you know, as we face challenges, the great, and maybe considered one of the greatest basketball coaches and leaders, uh, and motivators ever, is John Wooden, and he used to say, don't let what you cannot do interfere with what you can do. Um, I think too often, we think about what we're limited, um, from Austin and the rules and regs we have to follow, but there's so much that as a board, we can do. Um, and I think this board always strives to achieve what we can get accomplished, um, even with challenges, and, and everything in this country is a challenge right now, um, and so, let's focus on, uh, as we say in Arlington, a can-do city, let's be a can-do district and do those right things. So, with that, it is eleven forty-eight, uh, we are adjourned, thank you.